At least have a forum here, so we will get started. We've had a slight change. We are not due to fledge tonight. We will in fact listen to the National Anthem. So, girls, if you would like to take the lead. Appreciate that. If you would stand, please. Anytime you're ready.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last leaving? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And in my anxiety to hear that, I neglected to call this meeting to order. I wanted to call this meeting to order and document that time is 6:37. And now, with our mindfulness tonight, we welcome Ivy to lead us. And for those of the different crowd that we've had, our mindfulness is something we've had in place here for several months now. And it is partially in a tribute to the students that have done the mindfulness all year. But it also helps, I know it helps me, I'll speak for myself, to rearrange my head from work to this. So Ivy, if you would take us to another place, I would appreciate that.
Breathe in. Breathe out. 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 Today, I would like you to focus on some sounds. And let it go. Focus on some new sounds. And let it go. Some other sound. And let it go.
Thank you very much, Ivy. Appreciate that. Ah, let's see. So, from agenda review and adjustments, anybody have any adjustments? For this evening, we've got a couple. Any others? We're going to add, if we can, a discussion about the Burlington and Wunnestedt Joint Retreat that we did last year. We'll add that back down into governance processes. I would like to request, we have some folks here to help us discuss, from a board education standpoint, open meeting laws. I would like to move them up under public comments, if we can. And... Any concerns we'd make in those chats? Also. Turn it over to the focus on learning.
All right. It's all yours. Mary O'Rourke, JFK Elementary Principal, is going to tee it up for us.
I am, and I'm going to be very brief because everything I planned on doing, I see the students have already done, which is really the purpose behind project-based learning. So this year, we implemented project-based learning. And I'm going to let all of them really tell you about it. We have some first graders here tonight and some fifth graders. And they are going to explain to you what they've learned and what they've done. Project-based learning really shifts the focus of a teacher from being the teacher to a facilitator, where the students are really the ones doing the work and doing the learning. You will see that in just a minute. So I think we'll begin with the first grade. And they're going to come up and introduce themselves and tell you about their project.
All right.
I'm Jonah. And project-based learning is what we were thinking about is striving, thoughtful, accepting, responsible, and safe. We worked in groups of three and four. And we were trying to see what do the stars look like in our classroom? Or what kind of classroom do we need to help us play?
My name is Jacobi. And in the beginning, we had to watch a little film about all the other first graders. I talked about what we're going to use. Sorry, we're supposed to use classrooms more and safer. And then, and then, our teachers split us up into teams. And then, and then, we all worked together. And we all worked together. And then we got to interview. So Ava held the iPad. I mean, Ava read the questions. I held up the iPad of Mrs. Murphy and I'm in the video. And at first, it was kind of hard. But then we worked to it and found out what we were doing. And then, and then, we were the first team done.
My name's Eliza. And we worked as a group to learn more about being JFK stars. Ms. Zavee, who was the expert we interviewed, you two, learned about what is expected. She said, when you are in the library, it is being accepting so other people can read. We need a poster. Juma and I drew pictures. I drew pictures showing examples of being accepting to others. It was challenging when we had to choose one expert. I learned that accepting in school is really important.
My name is Ivy. And we learned about giving and receiving positive feedback. We learned to say things like, maybe next time you can try maybe this way, like this, instead of saying, that's bad. When we worked on our group project, we gave each other feedback so that we could help each other get better. Giving positive feedback helps our group make a better project together.
Nice work. Mary, if you could pull that back just a little bit.
There we go.
That's good.
So in our classroom, we did DBL projects on the Revolutionary War. And these are basically the steps that we followed. So first, we took out, we took our iPad and we learned basically as much as we could about the content of the Revolutionary War. So we made a need-to-know list of questions, like, what was the most common type of death in the Revolutionary War? Why does it matter what side you're on? And how did war affect non-soldiers, normal people? And then, Ms. Knapp read to us, what to us sounded like a breakup letter, but it's actually a letter from a friend to another friend who were on different sides, a rebel and a loyalist, telling how they could not be friends anymore because their parents wouldn't allow them because they were on different sides. So our driving question was, how can we investigate and celebrate people and viewpoints of the Revolutionary War? So we were given roles to investigate: a blacksmith, general store owner, a wife of a husband who was a loyalist, and a son who was a rebel, and seamstresses. We were given a choice of how we want to present them. So we used a PowerPoint, slideshow, an animation, or a play. So we broke into groups of three or fours in our teams. And we did our research for how it was like living, like that sort of character we had. We had to validate our findings and summarize our findings. We would do individual research, then collaborate and share our findings. And we had to create an opinion and decide how to present it on whether it would be a better idea to be a rebel or be a loyalist at that point. And what your character was to make sure that it was good. We did many team-building activities and reflected on how we were doing as a team and how to help each other. So the end-up inquiry was, after getting the big ideas about the Revolutionary War, we developed more specific questions on the role that we had. It's about a blacksmith, a general store owner, seamstress, and all the other roles that we had. So for critique and revision, we had to give a rubric on what we needed in our presentations to the members of the class. And so we looked at what we had done for our research and then added the pieces that we still needed. So in the end, we presented it to our class, Mr. Blanchard, who helps with technology. And we got to share all ideas about how we learned about the Revolutionary War.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah. I had a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask you, Jacobi, what did you like? What did you have fun about this project? How was it?
It was kind of, it was kind of, but because, because, because once we got to handle it and we found out on what we were doing and stuff, we kind of had a little bit of fun making posters and doing all that stuff.
Yeah. Great.
So either the first graders, I was wondering, did it make the stars like, safe, striving, accepting, responsible, and thoughtful? Did you see it differently after you had to look for experts? Did it change the way you saw it? What do you think? Now, did you already know kind of what an expert would do? Yeah? How did it make, how did doing that kind of project make it more interesting? Was it fun, videoing? And doing interviews and stuff?
Did you learn about ways that other people use stars like outside of school or in other ways? Can you tell us about any of that?
Like, if you're on the playground, if you're on the playground, you're playing tag. And then you go around the slide, put your big one. Don't just put your one down the slide so you can get down so you don't get tagged. You have to wait for your big tag.
And that's a great thing for even outside of school, right? In your neighborhood and...
Right, in the park. Ivy, what was it like working on a team instead of just by yourself? Or Eliza?
It was kind of complicated. It was kind of, you had to decide all of these things that you had to do. So you had to decide all of them together. But my group, they all wanted different things.
How did you, how did you work that out? How did you decide if you wanted different things?
Well... We all kind of agreed on something. Like, it wasn't any of our ideas, but we agreed on something that none of us thought.
Okay. What about you, Ivy? What about working on a team?
It felt good because I learned how to share.
Sharing your thoughts as well as thinking. One thing that struck me with that is the accepting piece. We spend a lot of time, even as adults, getting to that point. So starting in first grade is a big step forward. For those that did Revolutionary War, I got a real, I got a question about, how do you feel about learning it the way you did, driving your own investigation, rather than, how do you think it would have been different had you been sitting in a class and having the teacher tell you about it? Learn more this way? Learn more the other way?
Well, first of all, I think it was more exciting and kind of more possessive when we got to learn more about it. And we got to do more, we got more choice than we would have if we had just learned about it as a whole class instead of groups of three or four and have everybody doing different individual projects. I think it was more productive because we got to pick different roles and so we could learn more specific pieces as well as more bigger pieces. And we got to share with the class. Everyone got to learn more so we got really the big idea.
So you're learning from each other.
So did it make it more real, trying to figure out what it must have been like during that time? I mean, did you feel like you could put yourself in that time period?
Yeah, pretty much.
I have a question as well. From a student's standpoint, I'm a high school student. I'm a bit older than you guys. When you guys think of these new things you're doing through school and as you get older, how do you think that'll change? Will you still enjoy this? And will you have even bigger ideas in the future?
It was pretty tough doing research, but I think as you get, you get more time because you get more advanced. So you can, and actually, you give it a topic. And then you can actually do it yourself.
Pretty much, and that. But also, I think it's easier just to learn on your own and in a group with people that are your age. And it's easier for you to concentrate being in smaller groups and there's not different people. Kind of, you can focus on that one group and not other groups. And you can also, like, it's easier to take notes in small groups because it's, there's just less notes and it's easier because you cannot, it's quicker agreements through just a smaller group.
So that we don't just torture the kids that day. And you guys, you know, not going to be let off the hook. Our ship is sailing. Project-based learning, proficiency-based. How do you guys see this changing your roles? And how do you see yourselves adapting or adopting that?
As a, in fifth grade, it was, it was really incredible to watch. It was really hard for us to let go and say that they, you know, we knew they could do it, but for us not to be the driver, and I'm sure in first grade too, to not be telling them what to do and where to go, and stand back and let them struggle. But it was amazing to see at the end how much excited, more excited they were about the projects. And the ownership was incredible.
We saw a lot of team-building in first grade. Some of the kids talked about they really had to learn how to work together in a small group. And at, when you're six years old, that can be a little tricky. And they figured out ways to come to agreements, like Jonah was talking about. And many groups did what Jonah's group did. They decided to take a whole new idea instead of just one person's idea. And that's an important part, I think, of the project-based learning.
That we weren't the rescue. Like, they had to, they had to do a lot of problem-solving. And there were days that had tears. And there were days that you wanted to go over and make peace with everyone. And they honestly figured it out themselves. Our role then is being a facilitator, but it was our first experience doing it to us teachers. And we had an in-service to get ready for it. But it's a lot of thinking ahead. It's a lot of time as a teacher, even though the children are doing the work, you're doing the work before it all starts. So you still have a hand in making sure of what they're learning is your objectives.
And I think the four of us worked really well too, that we would come back each day and like, what did you do? What's going on? And so, we problem-solved together as well. And we're beating our heads sometimes. But like J.C. said, like, the outcome of the result was the best part. Like, it was worth all that head-banging and crying.
And we did our project like, right at the beginning of the year. So we didn't know the kids very well. They didn't know each other very well. So that was a really big part, I think, of our team-building in small groups and then also, you know, in our classroom. And they were able to come, you know, at the end of a work session and troubleshoot together and say like, wow, our group really had this big challenge. Like, what are some advice that some of the other groups have? Or, you know, figuring out what their roles were as team members, and also first graders and the little people who are budding, you know? So that was really cool.
Did you all find that this reached more learners by giving more kids access and more, you know, getting into that kind of stuff? Did you notice a difference?
One thing I noticed is when they started coming back after doing their interviews, they had to all interview their experts.
Yeah.
And they had their iPad so they could record it so that you could remember later on what the expert said. And we would sit back at the school watching those videos of those interviews. And it was terrible to see who was taking the lead and how they all decided to take turns. It was really neat to see everybody get a turn and how they organized it. And many times, they would forget to stop it. So you'd hear the whole conversation of who needs to go next and how they problem-solved it. Oh, this is my turn and you're doing this. So I liked that everybody had a voice in that. And we got a little secret viewing of it.
I loved, in fifth grade, they got to choose, and Ethan and Anna had done, they got to choose how they were going to present. And some of our more quiet kiddos in the classroom put on a play because that's what they love doing. And we just were blown away with just these girls up there. Were there any boys? I think there was one boy in that group, wasn't there?
He was kind of being a playboy.
No, I was actually, I was doing something else. And then, our group kind of actually, of three split. And then, there was one of like five. So I kind of...
Yeah, they shared, which was really cool. So they went and found the talents, you know, in different areas. And they went and helped each other out in the projects, which was really neat. So absolutely for the learners, it was really incredible to see everybody use what they knew really well and present that way.
Do you foresee an opportunity to bring parents in to see these presentations? Do you see it as amazing learning to have?
Definitely. It's important at the end for them to present and celebrate. The process took a little longer than we thought. Stuff tricky.
Yes, I definitely want to thank you guys. I mean, you're really stepping out of the comfort zone into something that I don't know that we have a lot of good material to teach you upfront. And you learn the hard way with hard knocks. But I'll leave you with something that I've tried to leave you guys with in the past. And that is, there is no failure only learning. So keep at it. But I do have one more. Best that you're off the hook. Just for, just any general thoughts with your children and these project-based, did it mention anything at home? Did it tell you much about what school allowed you to do?
I'll say that Ethan was very excited about his project. And it was as though he got to choose what he wrote. And they had to come up with their own questions that they then had to answer. And he would have questions and hear the questions that the other children had. And that would spark a new idea. And it kept going on. And it's one of the most talked-about projects. Most talked-about things that he's brought home.
Great. Any other questions? Well, to Jonah, and Ivy, and Eliza, and Jacobi, and Ethan, and Anna, thank you very much. We greatly appreciate your singing and mindfulness and presentation. Thanks, guys. I'm going to tell you, Ethan's started to become my favorite part of the whole meeting. And if you guys are... Like I mentioned in the outcome, thank you for smiling. Makes me feel a lot like...
Thank you for serving on the school board. Thank you, school board.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. All right. Move us down to our public comments. And tonight, we have Officer Jackson to intro our new SRO.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Officer Ron Jackson. I work for the Wunnestedt Police Department. And pleased to have with me tonight Officer David Sullivan. Sometimes I want to say Sullivan.
That's the other guy. He doesn't like me very much.
David comes to us from South Burlington Police Department. He's got extensive background. And he is going to be, and actually currently is, the new School Resource Officer in this school district. I had the opportunity to work with David here for a short period of time to help with the transition. And our purpose tonight was just to bring him, to introduce him to the school board, and to let you know that we're here to provide the best service that we can possibly do. We are interested in any comments, any suggestions, or any issues that you may see that you think that we could help you with. So please feel free to, using whatever communication methodology is appropriate, contact us, speak with us. We welcome any feedback and any questions that you may have. Say it.
So, yeah, I'll be grateful. We have a very busy agenda.
So, yeah, I'll be very busy, we have a very busy agenda. But, uh, name's Dave Sullivan. Uh, I'm a resident of Vermont. I was a police officer for 14 years in South Burlington, just left this, this past February. Amongst the many duties of years I did in South Burlington, was a School Resource Officer for two years there as well. Prior to being a police officer, I actually had a teaching certificate in Social Studies. And I actually taught a behavioral treatment program called Center Point. I don't know if you're familiar with that. I spent three years there, and it was marvelous training for law enforcement, to say the least. I won't get into some of the stories, but it was very interesting. Now, as Officer Jackson said, you know, we are here for you. I mean, we're, we're here not just to work with kids, but, you know, to build relationships. I'm really looking forward to getting into the classroom a little bit more. I know we haven't had as much of that in the last few years, but we're really looking forward to that. It's, as far as just Wunuski itself, I actually have some, just on a very quick side now, I have some very deep family roots in Wunuski. I grew up in Colchester, but on my mother's side, it goes all the way back to my great, great grandparents living in Wunuski. So, four generations lived here, including the house that my great grandparents built, my mother currently lives in. So, I'm a little bit invested in the city itself, not just solely from an employment perspective, but certainly from a community, community perspective as well. So, like I said, and I will just wrap it up real quick. And reach out to us any way you want, phone, email, if you're in the hallway, if you want to come to meeting, any questions you have. Be more than happy to answer. Ron's with me for a while. When he gets sick of me, which I think was last week, he's probably, he's going to let me go. But you can reach out to either one of us, because Ron is very active in this community as well too. So, if you can't reach me, it's easier to get to Ron, by all means do so. So, before I go, does anyone have any questions before I leave?
How's it going?
I'll tell you what, it's, it's been a good move, I have to say this. It's a very, obviously we all know, extremely unique community. There's no other community like this in Vermont. And I never really realized that until I came, actually, when I met with Sean prior to being hired, and he took me through, and he's like, "Wow, this is, this is not, this is not the type of school I grew up in. This is not the type of school I was used to working in." And I don't say that in a negative way, this is very different. And now, working here and kind of seeing the, the thought process and sort of creativity, I think that the, what we saw tonight with the children, the type of learning that they're trying to do. There's really, they've been talking about this type of learning for years. This is the first time I've actually seen it on the, on this type of scale, where you actually have whole classes doing that. I think it's wonderful. So, been very good so far. And I don't give short answers, as Sean says.
We're just happy to have you, man.
It's wonderful to hear about relationships being the cornerstone of the work, you know, with families and our community.
Yeah, I mean, because the schools are the heart of any community. I mean, I realize Wunuski, the growing section of the population, we're not seeing as many kids come in because the downtown development, the type of residents, the older residents, maybe the more professionals. But nonetheless, the community still remains, excuse me, the school remains the heart of the community. It just is what it is, that's where everything kind of comes together. So, like I said, it's a very unique place.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much, so, good luck. Nice meeting you.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay. And then as, we'll move six B, our open meeting up above the consent agenda. And at this point, we would invite you gentlemen, if you would, come right up to the table here with a couple, a couple of seats.
And I would just like to introduce Joe McLean and Bob Fletcher from Stitzel Page and Fletcher, law firm in Burlington. And thank them for, for coming to, to help the board and with their learning around executive session and open meeting law. So, thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you. And just before we even get going, I just wanted to say that listening to the project-based learning presentation and some of the comments, it was remarkable to me in a way. I've been coaching 10, 11, and 12-year-old girls hockey for the last five years. And honestly, many of the concepts of providing some broad direction and feedback, and then giving the students or athletes freedom to be creative and try new things, and fail but learn in the process, is exactly what USA Hockey is trying to do in developing Olympic-level hockey players from the ages of eight years old on. So, it was very interesting.
That's why, like I mentioned, we have all our, all our guests go after the focus on that. We all learn, we all learn from it.
That's a high bar.
Well, we're hoping to set.
So, we have, we do have some handouts that we should probably pass around before we get going.
So, this is first in a series, we got the open meeting, we got the Robert's rules, and then some financial work timed around the new board election and whatnot.
Right, so this part of our training, as a board, that we agreed that we needed together, because we felt like we weren't quite ready for it yet. Didn't know enough about it.
They have promised they're not going to read the entire statute.
We won't read the statute.
We promise we will.
Should I put this away?
That's true, you can put it away. I think I left my book in the car. But, um, just by way of very brief introduction, Bob and I are with a law firm in Burlington, Stitzel Page and Fletcher. We are a ten attorney firm that focuses on representing the needs of municipalities and school districts primarily. And in that capacity, we've had many occasions to interact with and speak about the open meeting law and the Public Records Act and municipal governance in general. And we were very pleased to have an invitation to speak with you today. As was indicated, it is not our goal here today to review the very dry language of the open meeting law and take you through item by item, the notices that you have to provide, and the timeframes that you have to meet, and things of that nature. What we really hoped to do was to provide you with some basic concepts, and then focus on some areas of the law that are, give rise to common questions. The two areas that we were thinking of discussing in particular have to do with electronic meetings and communications, and executive session, and the proper use of executive session. So, my, the plan is that I'll talk about electronic communications and electronic meetings, and then I'll hand it off to Bob to talk about executive session. But it will be more interesting if you have questions for us to respond to those questions directly, well, at the point that you have them. So, feel free to, to interrupt if you have a question. And we'll, we'll see what we can do to answer them. I'm sure that many of you are familiar, to some extent, with the open meeting law. And if you're not, the open meeting law is set forth in Title I of the Vermont statutes. And it provides a general right of the, the public to attend meetings of public bodies. And declares that all meetings of public bodies are open to the public at all times, subject to certain exceptions. And that broad statement of policy begs a question right away, which is, what is a meeting? What constitutes a meeting? And I'm, I'm sure that you all sit here and say, "Well, a meeting is what we do whenever we get together." And that's true, but you may also have occasions where you are meeting and you don't know it. And those are the situations that we really want to alert you to and guard against if we can. One thing that I will point out is that in the statute, there are terms that are defined. And we, we do encourage you to take the time to go online and find the statute. It's generally set forth in one VSA, Section 310, and the, I believe it is, and the provisions that follow. And the statute defines a meeting as a gathering of a quorum of the members of a public body for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body, or for the purpose of taking action. And interestingly enough, the, the statute also indicates in a number of places what is not a meeting. And so, you have to read that definition, together with those other statutory provisions that talk about what is not a meeting. And there have been some recent changes to the statute that, such that it now specifically calls out that "A meeting shall not mean written correspondence or electronic communications, including email, telephone, or teleconferencing between members of a public body for the purposes of scheduling a meeting, organizing an agenda, or distributing materials to discuss a meeting, provided that all of those things will be public records and available for inspection and copying under the public records provisions of the statute." So, in effect, a meeting does not occur when you are dealing with routine scheduling matters and other non-substantive matters. Similarly, this board and other municipal boards will sometimes sit in what's called a quasi-judicial capacity when you are being asked to act as judges. And that may occur in the context of a grievance appeal, or in the context of a student discipline proceeding. And I guess I would start by pointing out that quasi-judicial proceeding is defined in the statute. And the statute talks about a contested case under the Administrative Procedures Act, or a case in which, and this is probably the more appropriate definition for you, in which the legal rights of one or more persons are adjudicated. And there is, there are certain sort of fundamental due process considerations at play, including the opportunity to present evidence and cross-examine witnesses, and where your decision ultimately will be evidenced in writing, and that, with a right to appeal to a higher authority. When you act in, so, to step back, quasi-judicial proceedings and situations in which you are acting as a judicial body are exempt from the open meeting law. So, when you're acting in a judicial capacity, you are not subject to the requirements of the open meeting law. And similarly, the open meeting law expressly does not apply to your deliberations. In a fact, in fact, the deliberations of a public body in connection with a quasi-judicial proceeding is also exempt from open meeting law requirements. So, deliberations are not a meeting. Quasi, and I may, and...
Now, when you say not a meeting, not a meeting for general attendance by the public. It is, does have to be warned.
So, here's a, the one concept that I want you to focus on and carefully distinguish is the concept of deliberation and executive session. So, when you deliberate, when deliberation of a public body following a quasi-judicial proceeding is not a meeting.
And so, is that deliberation confidential?
That, so that deliberation, you may deliberate in any appropriate manner, at any time, outside of the requirements of the open meeting law. Distinguish that from executive session. You, you will, on a, on occasion, and Bob will talk about this, enter into executive session in which the public is excluded from the meeting. Executive session is an exception to the open meeting law. And it is a common misnomer to refer to deliberative sessions. And we generally discourage the use of that term, because it conflates the concept of deliberations with the concept of executive session. And so, when you deliberate, you are operating outside of the requirements of the open meeting law. When you are in executive session, you are meeting, but you are able, under certain discreet, in certain discreet circumstances, to exclude the public from the meeting.
When it's your personnel, privacy issue, issues, and... So, executive session and quasi-deliber, those are two separate things, yet they're both excluded from open meeting law?
Correct.
No.
No, okay.
The, the deliberations of the body, of the quasi-judicial body, is, is exempt from the open meeting law. It is not an open meeting. So, there's no need to come together, there's no need, need to notice, there's no need to warn, there's no need to convene, or, or take any formal action. Deliberations, as Joe said, can occur electronically, by telephone, in person, any combination. An executive session is the non-public portion of a public meeting. So, it's a, it, it is a mini-meeting within a public meeting. But it's a, it's a meeting from which the public is excluded, and to which the public has no right to, to have minutes, to have public input. So, it's, they're two different things.
And the deliberations are specific to the quasi-judicial processes? The deliberations on that judicial issue, whatever that is?
So, think, think of the Supreme Court. Periodically, one or both of us will go down and argue a case in front of the Supreme Court. We submit materials, those materials that are submitted are all a matter of public record. Anybody can see what we submit in writing, they can attend the oral argument, they can, they can hear the argument. The people in the, the audience at the Supreme Court have no right to say, "Hey, wait a minute, that's baloney." Or, "You forgot about this," or, you know? There's no public input to the Supreme Court. It's limited to the arguments that you make. Same is true in a trial court. You put on your evidence, they cross-examine the witnesses, you make a legal argument, and the judge goes off to decide. Just like the Supreme Court justices sit in private to deliberate, just as a trial court judge sits to deliberate on the evidence that he or she hears and the, and the law as presented, all of that occurs behind the curtain, outside of the public domain. Same thing for you all, if you sit in a, in judgment or in determination of the rights of one or more persons, as Joe said. So, if you have a student discipline matter, you hear the evidence. For a lot, it's a little bit unique, because you're going to, probably going to hear that evidence in executive session, because of the FERPA considerations and other reasons. But you could be, you could be out in a different municipal context, Development Review Board, where the proceedings, the evidence, would all be in the public eye. All of the information about the, you know, the development project, and why it's a good idea or a bad idea, and the wetlands, and the smoke, and the odor, and, you know, all the other considerations. All of that's in the public. But when the DRB makes its decision, it does so away from the public. Just like you would if you were deciding to, you know, to discipline a student, to expel a student. That's a, that is a deliberation to which the public is not invited, has no right to attend. And it can occur at your convenience, within the time limits specified by the rules. But that, that deliberation is something that you decide when you're going to do it, how you're going to do it. And all of the discussion back and forth is non-public.
Are there any cases with FERPA? Are there any cases where the hearing itself would be open, or have to be open?
For a student discipline situation?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of any others that we've hit without getting into too much detail.
Well, for instance, you, you, if you take it out of the, take it away from the students for the moment, because they have rights that, that are more protected than, for instance, your employees. You could have an employee discipline proceeding. Someone grieves a reprimand, someone grieves a suspension, someone grieves a rif. And they come and say, "I want, I want my hearing in public." That's their right.
Their choice?
Their choice, not yours. Not yours, under, so, as, as a school board, your, your, your feet are on both sides of the river, in a way. From a municipal perspective, municipal employees don't always have that, the same rights that... They, they obviously don't have the same rights as students, and in some cases, don't have the same rights as educators or staff of a school. But the, the staff, the, the employees of the district have that right to say, "I want my hearing in public." In which case, you're going to sit here, like judges, you're going to take the evidence, you're going to allow cross-examination, you're going to let, let in or not let in, depending on how you decide, documentary evidence, videotape, whatever it might be, whatever the evidence might be. You're going to say, "Have you said all that you need to say? Thank you very much, we're going to close the hearing. We'll issue a written decision within the time period provided under the statute." And you go away. And you go away. A lot of, a lot of public bodies make the mistake of saying, well, now we're gonna move to a deliberative session. There's no such thing as a deliberative session. You just, the hearing is closed, evidence is closed, thank you very much. You excuse everyone, you cl- you close that meeting, the public meeting to hear the evidence. You close that and then you sit and you say, when can we get together and talk about the evidence?
Cause usually we have a timeline when we have to get back to the issue of the grievance or whatever.
Right, correct, yeah, and you, so you need to meet that requirement, but you don't need to, you don't need to deliberate in public. You can, if you choose to. I don't see, you know, it doesn't happen very often. Some some boards wanna have a very open process, I mean, um it's it's pretty extraordinary to do that, but you can do that if you wish. Um be mindful of whether you are saying things about the employee. Or their evidence, or who you believe, I mean be- because part of the deliberative process is. You know, I didn't believe what they told me about the events on Thursday, or, you know. I know so-and-so and they, th- they're best friends, so I don't put a lot of stock in what so-and-so says. If you say those things in public, some of that's, some of that stuff is damaging to people's reputations. If it's rumor or innuendo instead of fact, if you can't prove it. Y- y- you could be the def- you could be on the wrong side of the V point part of the lawsuit. So, you know, you could be the def- the named defendant in a defamation action, or a libel or slander action, so you. Our advice would be deliberate in private. But assess the evidence.
But but the primary uh or a primary purpose for deliberating privately is not to. Avoid saying something that like, I didn't believe so-and-so's expert witness. Not to avoid saying something publicly, but to protect the board's interest. In being able to have free and open communication without the pressure of. Uh without undue uh pressure being brought to bear because of other relationships. Uh and uh other circumstances that might give rise to uh anything other than an impartial evaluation of the evidence that you heard. So yes, if you're, if you choose to deliberate privately, or excuse me, publicly. You may want to be more mindful of what you say, but really the purpose of going into a uh deliberation. And to deliberate privately is to protect you and uh from those external pressures.
Procedural question, so typically, if if uh, let's just use a grievance hearing as an example. So um a board and uh all involved would go into ex- executive session. To this quasi judicial proceeding and go through the process. Should a, should a board then be closing the executive session if they wish to deliberate and excusing everyone? And if they wanna deliberate immediately, they can, but they need to close that executive session, cause if it's still open.
If you, i- i- as soon as you cl- yes, as soon as you close the executive session, however, you're now in an open session because you commenced an open session.
Then you adjourn.
So then you adjourn the meeting, if you wish to discuss it at that immediate time, you clear the room. Get get the public out, the press out, and then you can sit and deliberate. That 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 is the process that you would go through, but you you gotta remember all the doors you opened and you gotta close all the doors. Because you don't wanna just jump into deliberative process without closing the executive session, closing the open session. Clearing the room and then doing your thing.
So then if you've adjourned, you, let's say you deliberate that night. Um and then if you have to take action, you've gotta then do that at another meeting.
Um no, y- you can issue a written decision within the time period. Um and you typically would get consensus for execution of that. Written decision by the chair or someone with a, with a um designation, Sean. Of who's in favor, who's against. You know, so you put that right on the signature block, dated such-and-such, Winuski Vermont. So-and-so for the board or for the majority, those in favor, those against. And you issue that, you don't need to have a public meeting to adopt that written decision.
If the written decision will be a public record.
Right, and it, right. Now, student discipline matters? You, if you're going to issue a written decision, you're probably gonna issue two decisions. You're gonna issue one that doesn't identify the student specifically. Says student one hundred and seven, whatever you want, whatever designation it is, is hereby suspended. For X period, for violation of school policy, or whatever the reason is, done. Then you have a f- a detailed description of the facts, the findings, the basis for the decision and the decision. One is a public record that would enable the public to understand that a student was disciplined in this manner. On this date, and then you'd have a more detailed disciplinary decision. That you would provide to the student or his or her parents, guardians, and say, here, here's what we determined, based upon the evidence we heard. This is our decision. They should match, by the way. That one goes in the student record and never sees the light of public day.
And the, but the other one has to be published in minutes?
Yes, well, or it has to be available as a public document.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily have.
You don't have to put it in a minute, you just.
Just a potter glass.
It's, yeah, it's a public document.
The one that doesn't have the student name on it.
Yes, right. And hopefully, you're not doing enough of these that you have a sequential designation of the student, you're not using, you know, you're not, you're not using. Inadvertently some way to identify the student that someone could break the code and figure out it was, you know, female student X or male student Y. You just pick a random set of six numbers and put it on.
So so Sean said, uh when we would do that quasi judicial thing, we would go into executive session and hear the case. You're saying that that if it's a staff, we don't necessarily, uh we we can't insist on the executive session if the staff person wishes to have it public?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, and that would be something that their union would advise them, I would imagine, if they wanted to.
Right, and and you, so you'd have the show right here.
Right here, right.
That's sometimes the case.
But it's not our obligation to advise them that they could have a public version of it, uh that's their lawyer's obligation.
I think at the beginning or red.
Yeah, I mean generally, yeah, generally, in in the uh, at least in the letters that we write for our clients. To uh agreement, saying, you know, we're gonna have a hearing. You tell them it's scheduled for such-and-such a day, it starts at such-and-such a clock. You, you know, it will be in executive session unless we hear from you.
Oh, okay.
That you wish for that to be in a public session, open session. So that they then have notice and an opportunity to say, hey, I, you know, I'm willing, I'm willing to air my grievances in public if you are.
So we're just, are there other questions? We're talking about what is and is not a meeting. And sort of started with the basic concept of a meeting being a gathering of a quorum of the public body. We talked about the fact that in the statute, uh as recently amended. Um communications, including email communications for non-substantive matters, um do not qualify as a meeting. Talked about the deliberations of um the board when it's serving in a quasi judicial capacity, not constituted a meeting. The statute also expressly provides some other exceptions to the open meeting law for. Uh clerical work, work assignments to staff and other personnel. And provides that uh routine, day-to-day administrative matters that do not require action by the public body. Can maybe conducted outside of a warned meeting, um provided that no uh money is appropriated, expended, or encumbered. So the statute makes a la- uh has increasingly been attempting to make allowance for day-to-day administrative matters. Um and um. And that, you know, that that then brings us back to uh this issue of, okay, well. What is a meeting then, particularly in um uh this day and age when so much is done. Um via electronic communications. So when we did our pre- uh did our presentation um on open meeting law about a year ago. Uh we talked about the fact that uh particularly with regard to email, that the Vermont Supreme Court had never addressed. The issue of whether conduct of a meeting by electronic means um was or was not permissible. And whether email communication between members of a public body could constitute a meeting subject to the open meeting law. Well, since that that time, the legislature has amended the open meeting law so that it now expressly provides that. Uh participation in meetings through um electronic or other means um uh it is permissible. That um so long as you uh comply with certain statutory requirements. Uh you can conduct regular, special, and emergency meetings um by um by way of electronic means. And uh those particular requirements that now apply. Um include um the statement that one or more members of the board may participate electronically. Whether by Skype or teleconference uh or uh any other means. That allows uh the members to really hear and be heard. Um uh the statute provides that uh full participation by the person. Uh who is uh involved in the meeting uh electronically uh may occur, including voting on any action, provided that the vote is by roll call. Um where you have a situation where a quorum or more of the members of the public body are not available. To attend a meeting in person, it is still permissible to um. Uh conduct a meeting without physical presence. Uh there are some particular requirements that now apply there, however. Um including that the public body at least twenty-four hours in advance publicly announce the meeting. Uh meaning uh then the term publicly announced is defined in the statute as essentially providing notice to um the editor of the local newspaper. Or to the local television station. And also that you're required to post notice of the meeting uh in the lo- in the municipal clerk's office and to other public places. Um and uh the public announcement of the meeting now has to designate a physical location. Where members of the public can um attend and participate in the meeting. And interestingly enough, the statute provides that um you could, and contemplates that you could in fact have. Um a lawful meeting where no members of the public body were pr- physically present. As long as uh at least one staff or d- member or designee of the public body is physically present. So um we uh, I haven't seen that situation arise yet, but presumably if you were all on uh vacation. And decided to Skype, Skype in into your meeting and Sean was sitting here and and you had a computer set up so that everyone could. Uh uh hear and be heard, um.
So it's hear and be heard not necessarily be seen.
That's the standard, the standard is, you need to identify yourself and you need to hear the conduct of the, of the meeting and be heard throughout the meeting.
I did a, I did a city council meeting with a member who was in Florida on vacation, who Skyped in. And periodically we checked to make sure that he could hear us and that we could hear him and all the votes were taken by roll call, so. It's fine. It's a little weird, but it's fine.
Good to see we're coming into the twenty-first century, isn't it?
Let's go somewhere.
Lord retreat in the Bahamas, I think.
Except Sean, yeah, he's stuck here.
More and more interviewing is being done.
Just along the lines of the use of electronic media, uh the the recent amendments to the statute also now provide that. When you, uh if if you maintain a website, as uh Winuski School District does. There are now statutory requirements, I'm sure that Sean is aware of this and maybe others as well, that you need to. Um post your agenda electronically in advance of the meeting, uh and also ensure that your me- your minutes are posted. Within, I believe it's five days of the meeting. Um so that's uh, that was just another um twist uh on uh the the open meeting law that was recently added.
Now, minutes in five days can be the ten- temporary minute, not necessarily the final version right off, but they have to be there.
That's correct.
Updated when the official.
And uh, you know, this isn't, this is a little beyond the focus of what we'd intended to talk about, but the other thing to keep in mind, and I believe that this is addressed in the handout. Is uh the issue of what the open meeting law actually requires in terms of minutes. And you know, there are, there are communities and school districts that keep minutes that are um almost a transcript of what occurred. And uh, you know, that goes far beyond the statutory requirement. So it's um, in terms of turning out minutes in a timely manner, um uh. As long as you comply with the statutory requirements, there really shouldn't be an issue getting the minutes out within the time that the statute has provided. The use of email communication is one that we're frequently asked to talk about and um there are. Um st- there there remain a number of open questions about email communication between board members. I think that um a- 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 and there's a limited guidance in Vermont. As is common, uh there, there isn't a lot of uh Vermont law on a number of subjects, including this one. Um but there are um, there's guidance in other states. Um you know, there have been, um there are cases. Uh that address the use of email and uh email communications. And the the primary thing to keep in mind with respect to email communications is that courts. Uh look with disfavor upon efforts to evade the intent of the open meeting law. So that um. And the law defines um. It defines a meeting as a gathering of a quorum. So if, we don't yet know exactly what that means in the world of electronic communications, but it's conceivable that. Um serial email, um emails that are sent uh simultaneously or virtually simultaneously. So that there there's a contemporaneous conversation going on, could constitute a gathering of a quorum. And if 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 the gathering of the quorum of the public body is discussing uh the business of the public body. Or uh proposing to take some action or taking some action, you probably have a meeting. And you need to be mindful of that.
But Joe, so like, uh you know, I get if I'm, so quorum is three, right, in our case, three out of five, right? So um, so I get an email to everybody, you know, where I'm saying, hey, I think next week when we talk about discipline, we need to rethink, blah, 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 blah. That that sounds like conducting business with a quorum because I'm sending it to the whole body, right? But if, what, where I'm less clear is if I write to Tori and say, Tori, you know, next week we're gonna talk about discipline and I think we should stop suspensions. And Tori says, yeah, great idea, you know, I'm into that. And then I write Mike later and say, Mike, I think, you know, we should stop suspensions next week, and it's it's sort of this like one-on-one communication. But still on the topic of business and via electronics.
That's what I think of as the spoke hub. There's one person who's the central communicator and is never communicating.
Federal government, they consider that a conspiracy.
You know, when one person is always only communicating with less than a quorum, but has in actuality. The object, uh but but in actuality, they communicate with everyone. And to tell you the truth, there, I'm, I've seen numerous circumstances in the past where that is exactly how. A municipality might operate in order to to sort of get things done. Often there's a tension between trying to do what you need to do to get through the business of the board at a particular meeting.
Yeah.
And uh what the open meeting law actually requires. And so in a situation like that. I would be nervous that, about taking it too far. I think that, again, it's the type of situation where a court could find that there was some intent to evade the requirements, even if, or even if you didn't have actual intent to violate the open meeting law in practical terms you did, whether you intended to or not. The, you know, there are cases out there, and one of them is fairly dated at this point, but Virginia has an open meeting law that is analogous to Vermont's and that rather than talking about a gathering of the members, the gathering of a quorum of the members of a public body, they use the term assemblage. And in a situation where the email was used to communicate, the court, and again, this decision is 10 years old, and who knows how, whether the court would look at it, courts would look at it differently today. But in that case, the court actually said that, it looked at whether or not there was some type of simultaneous communication or near simultaneous communication. And they said there, where email is used effectively in the same manner as a letter.
Yeah, right.
There's no assemblage of the members. But that gathering in a chat room or instant messaging probably would violate.
That's assemblage.
That's assemblage. That would probably violate the spirit, if not the letter of the law. And, you know, a number of these electronic communication issues, I think will continue to come to the fore as we, I think, as communities and school boards become more sophisticated about how to get their business accomplished.
Now, just one piece on the email. I'll get some things from Sean from time to time. I had something happen in school, wanted you to know. I'll blind copy everybody and just push it out, not expecting any, just FYI, you know, here you go, this is just for your information, not seeking any input. Doing the blind copy so you can't, that doesn't invite the give and take. Where does that fall?
Well, we're at, I would have been nervous about that or previously was nervous about that, but I think the amendments to the statute do clear up that type of situation to some extent where they now specifically indicate that you don't have a meeting where you're merely distributing materials to discuss at the meeting. So if Sean sends you something and you copy everyone and say, this is to be discussed at the meeting, I think you're okay. If you do the same thing and say,
What are your thoughts?
What are your thoughts or here's my opinion on this? I think you're starting to get into a more dangerous territory.
Yeah.
In the interest of time here, we just want to make sure we know where you guys are and keep you moving without cutting you down.
I think I'll let Bob take over and talk a little bit about executive session here.
All right, that's fine.
Any other things on, I'm sorry, on the previous topic?
Okay. As I said earlier, executive session is the non-public portion of a public meeting. So it is the, it is an opportunity for a public body like yours to exclude the public and relieve yourself of the responsibility to take minutes, provided that you do it right and you do it for the right reasons. So there are two classes or groups of subjects that are permissible for discussion in executive session. There are those that require a finding, an affirmative finding by the board that premature public knowledge of the topic to be discussed would put the district or an involved individual at a substantial disadvantage. And then there are the presumptively permissible executive session topics. So what falls into the first category? First category includes things like an executive session to consider or to hear from legal counsel, to receive confidential attorney-client communications or advice. So in connection with providing legal services to the board. Just because it's your attorney, you can't use that as a foil and have them bring in materials from staff or administration and say, well, our attorney read the letter, so it's covered. No, it has to be for the purpose of legal advice. And it has to be attorney-client communication, the kind of thing that the law would protect from public disclosure. You can discuss contracts under the first rubric. You can discuss labor relations, negotiations, or agreements. You can conduct your grievances. You all don't conduct tax grievances. Those have to be in an open session. But grievances by employees, arbitration remediation matters, or pending or probable civil litigation to which the public body is, and I would say, or may be, a party. So threatened lawsuit that is either now pending, has been filed, or is probably going to be filed. Some reasonable exercise of judgment. You can discuss that, you can go into executive session to discuss that. All of those topics, all of anything falling within those subject matters require, as I said, that the body make an affirmative determination that premature public knowledge of the subject of the discussion would put you at a substantial disadvantage or an impacted party at a substantial disadvantage. The other topics, and I'll come back to the mechanics in a minute. The other topics that fall into that group or fall into the permissible topics for subject for executive session are matters that are clear or of clear or imminent peril to public safety. So you don't need a finding of premature public disclosure being substantially disadvantageous. You only need to know that it's clear or imminent peril. School security or emergency response. You can discuss those things in executive session without the substantial disadvantage language, although I would suggest to you that you could also probably make that finding anyway. But you don't need it. Disciplinary or dismissal actions against public officers or employees, unless they want it in public. The appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee provided that any decision to actually hire that employee is made in public session. So you can have the discussion about, do we hire X for this position or not in executive session? But the decision to hire has to be made in public session. Some things that aren't really applicable to you, like testimony under parole proceeding, pharmaceutical rebates that are exempt from federal disclosure or exempt from disclosure under federal law. Academic records of or suspension or discipline of students. There's one that's specifically appropriate for executive session. In fact, FERPA makes it such. And the negotiating or securing of real estate purchases or lease options. So if you all thought you needed to expand your footprint and you wanted to acquire a neighboring property, it wouldn't be advantageous to you to have that in the public arena until you secure the option. That is the only action that you can take in an executive session is to negotiate or secure a real estate option. The only thing you can, public action or binding action that the public body can take in executive session. So an executive session is really only an opportunity for discussion. It's a discussion outside of the public eye for one of these topics. And it's not, it is not an invitation to say, we're going into executive session to discuss contracts and turn that into a multifaceted discussion. The motion that you make to move from a public meeting into an executive session has to be specific about the reason or reasons you're going there. You can go for multiple reasons, but if you're going to talk about a contract for food service and then you're going to have a employee discipline matter or to review bids on a, on an RFP or something, you want to specify both of those in your motion. Your motion wants to reflect both of those. And that's the limit to what you, that you can discuss. It's not a free-range, you know, whatever we think of while we're in executive session.
Got that education. But with the exception of real estate, when you come out of executive session, you must, if it's more than just discussion, the action has, if there's any action that needs to be taken at the close of.
If you're, if you, if the end result of the discussion is, we've decided we're going to, you know, do X, you don't make that theoretically, you don't make that discussion or that decision in your executive session. You get to the point where the chair or whomever is saying, I think we have consensus. You look around the room, people kind of go. Then someone, you move to come out of executive session in public now. And if the press has been shooed out of the room, you bring them back in. If the public has been shooed out of the room, you bring them back in. We're now in public session. Does anyone have a motion to make? I move that we, whatever. All those in favor, aye? All those opposed, nay? Ayes have it, nays have it, whatever the answer is. So you, the action you've taken is in public session. You're not hiding from the public the action you're taking. You're only keeping the public from being a participant in the making of the sausage, if you will, the discussion that you have leading up to the decision.
In the second grouping, the number one, number two, where you're talking about public safety and school security. My assumption is that that would be under the emergency meeting provision as well. Which basically says you have to inform the public when you can.
Right, but you would have, if there was something that fell into those categories, I mean, particularly the clear and imminent peril is one, where if you called this board together, you would give as much notice as you could. It would be an emergent situation. It can't be, we're planning, this is our response plan, you know, in the event that something happens. It has to be emergent then. Something that can't wait for a special meeting, which is only 24 hours. So it really has to be an emergency. But yes, you could, you could call the board together as soon as you had a quorum present. You could convene the meeting and you could move into executive session to discuss clear and imminent peril to public safety, whatever it might be, you know? Well, then you have your conversation.
Just in terms of a couple of quick observations about the way that the law has changed. Bob mentioned that in the first category of executive session topics, it's now necessary to make a finding, a preliminary finding, that premature general public knowledge of a topic will clearly place the public body at a substantial disadvantage. I sometimes see public bodies wanting to enter executive session to negotiate resolution of a lawsuit directly with the plaintiff and their attorney. Say you have a negligence suit against the town or the school based on a slip and fall and you want to try to negotiate a resolution. It's hard to imagine how with the other party in the suit, in the room with you, that opening that discussion up to the public would place the board or the school at a substantial disadvantage. But we do sometimes see communities or school boards ask if they can do that. Another thing to keep in mind.
Particularly if they don't have counsel present.
Right.
Joe's example is, you know, on my top three horror stories about executive session. The parallel to it is you want to, somebody's approached you about entering into a contract and the board is inclined to allow the negotiating party, just as in a lawsuit, but now you're talking in a contract context, into executive session. And I say, so where is the disadvantage? Who's being substantially disadvantaged here? And sometimes the answer can be the other party. Because substantial disadvantage doesn't necessarily have to be your substantial disadvantage. It can be an interested person. And they may not want their information in the public domain. But you need to go a long way to make that, to have that teed up so that you could make your finding of substantial disadvantage.
But the distinction there, though, is that we could go into executive session if we wanted to deliberate among ourselves about our strategy and approach to that conversation with the other. If we bring the other into our executive session, that's where it's just like, we're just hiding from the public eye in that particular case. And that's where things could get a little murky if someone were to bring suit. Okay. So if we're talking amongst ourselves, executive session is appropriate. If we're negotiating with the other, it's probably not appropriate.
Unless, unless that other person, whomever it is, can make some case for why it would be publicly disadvantageous. Like, I won't do this deal if I have to tell you in public what I'm willing to pay for or what I'm willing to work for or, you know, whatever. You know, there can be circumstances.
Right, I don't want other people thinking this is my bid for standard. I want this work so I can have it as a showpiece and so I'm going to bid low, but I want to tell you that in private.
Right, or I'm, you know, or I'm just not interested if this is going to become a public debate.
Ah, okay.
You know? I'm a lifelong citizen, but I'm not, I'm not going to bid against Joe Blow and John Blow. You know? If you want to hear my pitch, you can hear it, but it's going to be in executive session.
I got you.
The only other thing I was going to mention when we spoke about a year ago was ambiguous whether or not the law allowed the board to meet with legal counsel to receive legal services in executive session. Now the statute expressly allows that. The other change that was fairly significant is that in the past, you could enter executive session to discuss, I think it was the phrase, as civil actions or civil or actions or enforcement actions in which the public body is a party. Significantly, the statute now allows you, without your attorney present, to enter executive session, with or without your attorney, to discuss pending or probable litigation. So if the board receives a letter that says, we're thinking about suing you for this, or, you know, if you don't do X, we will file, we will file suit on such and such a date. That would provide a basis to go into executive session on the basis of pending or probable litigation. You don't have to wait until you're sued to go into executive session to talk about it.
One other thing before we probably have taken up more time than you wished to devote to this. The motion to go into an executive session, in addition to all the things we've already talked about, must garner an affirmative vote of the majority of the members present. So if you have only a bare quorum, three members, you need two to go into executive session. If you have all five, you need three. The motion should specify the individuals whom you wish to have with you in executive session.
Other than the board?
Other than the board. The board's automatically allowed in. Everybody else is at your discretion. So if you want legal counsel, you should say, we want, you know, we're going to invite, you know, the motion should say, and including clerical assistants. You might have your superintendent with you. You might have legal counsel. You might have a consulting engineer, depending on what the facts and circumstances. you might have a consulting engineer, depending on what the facts and circumstances are. But your motion should specify who you want with you in that executive session.
And so we do need to name Sean if he goes into executive session with us?
Sean doesn't have any right to go anywhere you don't invite him to go.
I keep telling him that.
He keeps following.
One, uh, I, I said a moment ago one other thing, but now I have one, now I really have another one other thing. The other horror story that, that you, um, that you want to be mindful of and you want to avoid is when you are dealing with either student discipline or employee discipline matters and the admini- uh, members of the administration are presenting the administration's case. You know, it's an, it's an adjudicated proceeding. So and so did this, this is why we're disciplining so and so. If the administration carries that weight, if he or she is the litigator, for lack of a better term.
Prosecutor.
Prosecutor, litigator. They, that individual should not then be invited into an executive session or be included in deliberations.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, it's fundamentally unfair to the other side. Uh, so if you have a hotly contested disciplinary proceeding, you may wanna think about early on, do we need separate legal counsel? If legal counsel is gonna assist the administration, do we need to hire someone to sit with the board during deliberation to help with that process? Or do we want legal counsel with the board and let the administration do the prosecution? See my point?
Yeah.
So, you, because you don't want to have Sean present the disciplinary matter to you and then say, um, we're gonna, we're, now we're gonna deliberate, we're, you know, we're all done with our public meeting, we're gonna deliberate, Sean, stick around. Because it's fundamentally unfair to the other side to allow the prosecutor also to sit with the judges.
Thinking about, thinking about the process to follow if it gets to the board where we end up acting in a crazy judicial manner, need to. Sean has become deeply involved in the investigation and the original work.
Typically, yeah.
And typically, we'd have nobody but the board and the counsel.
It, it's not, it's not absolutely fatal, like, but it, it's close.
It really is.
Because, you know, it gives, it gives the other side the opportunity to raise that as a, as an issue and you end up fighting over the process instead of the s- or in addition to the substance of what your, what the dispute is. There is law that you can prosecute and also, eh, eh, for lawyers anyway, we could serve as prosecutors and advise the body. There is law that says that, but there isn't law like that in Vermont, so you're borrowing from other states. And why put yourself in that place if you don't need to?
As I understand it, coming out of executive session, it just dissolves? Or do you need a motion to end executive session? I've been trained that, uh, I thought executive session-
Move to go in, I'd move to come out. No, but nobody keeps, you know, there's no minister.
Proceedurially, if that matters.
You just wouldn't want somebody to think they were still in executive session and they're not and they, you know?
Right.
You sort of wanna, you wanna have that bright line.
Whoops.
Alright, any other questions?
Nice, helpful, very helpful, guys, thank you.
And as we go through the next year, we'll have another session or even sooner if we need to, we keep an eye on here to the floor for things that come up and say, need to know more about that or wanna, so.
As we mentioned earlier, if you have follow-on questions.
Yeah, we're happy to help out.
Alright. Great. We're here to, uh, ensure the district is run well. We don't wanna be part of the reason that it's not.
Right.
Stay out of the way. Alright.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
Good luck with your hockey.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we will then pick up where we left off at the consent, uh, at the consent agenda and, um, normally, uh, I will accept the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Moved.
Second, second, sorry. Uh, any other discussion? I just, go ahead, Tori, if you have.
The superintendent report in that, what we consent agenda?
The superintendent.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. There was some fantastic information in there.
Well, good.
Absolutely. The, um, change of, um, what's coming in two thousand sixteen.
The house model?
Woo! That is amazing.
We'll get more of that later.
Yeah, which I'm excited about. But also the, um, the community initiative to focus on early childhood that we won the grant to push that forward, right?
Which one?
The VCPC grant?
Yeah.
We got a second year on that.
Okay.
Yep.
But this one, this promised community initiative?
Yes, that's new.
That's new?
Right.
That's fabulous.
Yep.
Yay, early education.
It's a very collaborative, uh, and very broad, um, initiative, which, yeah, we're really excited about it.
Yay!
Because it's, uh, like, you look at that first couple parents, it's about education, it's about housing, it's about transportation, healthcare.
Yeah.
You know, and what we have found in, in a number of ways is if you're not looking at all of those pieces, you're not serving families well. And we can't do all of those things at school, but we can be a part of the process, we can be a leader in the process.
Fabulous.
Many things.
Better care of our community and our families.
I'd like to, um, throw out a congrats to Tavamus Tovich. Uh, that was quite an honor, the, uh, NEA Human and Civil Rights Award.
It's huge!
It's a big deal. The only other question I had in there is, in the financial report, there's one line item that I wanted to ask specifically about it. I know we're kinda straying off topic here and it should be easy. It was a ten thousand dollar reduction in sub-expenses. Does that just purely and simply say we're using less subs than we have been?
Yes.
Easy enough.
Less than budget.
Less than budget. The budget is based on past experience and results.
But when we do use them, we have good ones?
We have subs.
Okay, that's all, alright. But we're using less, that's good news.
There is, there is always a, there is always a shortage, no matter where you go, in Chitting County, I don't think anybody would tell you, we've got, you know?
But the fact that we're using less?
Yes.
I, I think that says a whole lot of other things, uh, in the background too, so.
Does it? I mean, what, what, that's what I was gonna ask. What, what conclusions do you draw from that?
To me, the only thing, uh, uh, in, in having watched specifically the statement about subs over the last three or four years, um, we were using, uh, a lot of subs for a lot of different reasons. Um, to me, the lack, or not the lack, the, the lessening of the need for subs is, uh, a climate statement.
People are-
It's being here, wanting to be here, uh, happier being here.
Indication of motivation.
I may be completely off base, but to me, that is one of the indicators of that whole piece.
Interesting.
So, I'm, maybe a leap of faith, but.
And we're just starting to get our arms around how to get that data out, you know, particularly when you start to look at staff leave analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're just, we're starting to be able to pull that out. And, and, and my hope would be that would become an indicator in the future of, you know, as the approach of wellness working, you know, with less leave being taken. You know, because we need our teachers in front of our kids, that's the-
Yes.
The number one piece.
So I have a clarifying question. Would, um, using paraprofessionals as subs mess up that data? But if, if, if a parer is used as a sub, does that go in as sub pay?
It does.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
So we don't get too far into the means of the discussion.
No, exactly. No, it's great, it's great data to-
Appreciate the, uh, of course. So I do have a motion, um, to accept the consent agenda and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Great, uh, thank you. Then we'll move, uh, on to our student report to the board. Welcome.
I think it's still snowing, is it?
It is.
I think it is.
More-
Oh, yeah, it's here. Look how pretty this is. No, we haven't seen it yet.
It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas.
Like I said, April snow showers bring many dead flowers.
Oh, Rainbow, get sunny, will ya?
It's raining right now.
It's getting pretty sunny in here.
So, um, uh, the first thing on our report, uh, we'll be going in order to elementary, middle, high school. Um, so right now, uh, we have, uh, the PTO Fund Fair happened on March twentieth. Of course, our elementary kids always enjoy that every year. Um, there's always bouncy castles, snow cones, food raffles. Um, and what PTO Fund Fair is, for those of you who don't know, is, um, a activity that is hosted by the PTO where it just allows kids to have fun for, um, as it also helps raise money by buying tickets. But it's mainly for the kids to have fun. And, um, I spent a good amount of money on the Fund Fair when I was younger, on that raffle. I got, I got a bunny, it was worth it.
Right.
Um, uh, so, uh, another thing, uh, there's a JFK Disney Community Reads, uh, held in the library just over there. Uh, some of the older JFK students helped, uh, and the community was invited to listen to, uh, our mayor read Disney stories while accompanied by some of the Disney princesses, which were, um, fifth grade students who dressed up. Um, there are some pictures on the website if you'd like to check that out. Uh, there's also an activity coming up on April thirteenth, uh, called the Winuski School District Let's Grow Kids. Um, it's an activity where, um, library and, um, the librarians are inviting children and toddlers from ages zero to four to the library and, um, teach them about mindfulness, finger plays such as like language exploration and using their fingers to help count, um, how to hold a pencil, write their names, and begin early development in the children's brains and this early in life.
The students of Ms. Parkett's Effective Communications class are having a grand time with their mentoring. So the students are scattered throughout classrooms from kindergarten to second grade. And they spend the entire time of their class helping students with anything from reading to recess. All the students enjoy the time they spend with each other, it's really great. Uh, there will be an anime slash manga convention in the cafeteria for all students to learn about Japanese culture next Friday. This will also be a chance to connect with other people who have similar interests and hobbies with Japanese culture and anime slash manga. On March thirteenth, so way back in time, the Peace Jam Club traveled once again for another New England conference in Connecticut. They spent most of Friday afternoon traveling, we're not relaxing. Saturday was full of workshops related to servicing the environment, such as making little trinkets to raise money and learning about the UNICEF TAP project, which there are posters all over our school now, raising awareness in our school. On Sunday, they had an aspirations day where they were able to s- s- present their aspirations in a group activity in front of everyone. And they were also to speak privately, they were also able to speak privately with Nobel Peace Laureate, uh, Shereen Abadi. I butchered that. All in all, sounds like an amazing experience. On March fourteenth, four students participated in a curling tournament hosted by the Howard Center. Jason Strong, Marie Lee, Nikki Deng, and me, with the supervision of Brent Littler, Littler, traveled to the Howard Center with no previous experience of curling, played two rounds. We lost both games, but we had fun. And we even had a little cheering squad of two very nice old ladies. So it was a very pleasant experience.
Did you sleep?
I, we did all of it. And, yeah, when you're playing curling, you have to switch, switch to, yeah, so.
Oh, you switch roles, okay.
So everyone did everything.
You threw and everything?
Yeah. Not good.
Just like the Olympics.
Yes, sure. A little more fun.
Was that the first year that the high school done that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, first year, that, we all did that.
And it's a fundraiser for the Howard Center?
Yes.
I think curling's coming back, I think it's gonna be big.
Okay, um, so, uh, next up, we have, uh, the Pittsfield Field Trip. Pittsfield Field Trip. Um, this is, uh, like I've said in the past few board meetings, um, the, uh, Field Trip funded, uh, by the Partnership for Change and Connected with Parents for Change. Um, March seventeenth and eighteenth, we went to Pittsfield, New Hampshire, um, to learn about what Pittsfield Middle High School is doing about student leadership opportunities and also student voice roles in their school. And, uh, we've learned a lot of amazing facts and also things about developing, um, the entire process and, um, what their school thinks. Um, a f- a really cool fact is that, um, in two thousand seven, Pittsfield, uh, Middle High School was considered one of the top twenty lowest ranking schools in the state. And now they're one of the top thirty in the state, um, as of twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. Um, so they've had a site council, which is similar to, um, similar to a school board, but with, um, representatives, representatives from each grade, um, representatives from each, uh, social standpoint of the school, such as the people who might misbehave, uh, or the people that honor students. It's a very diverse, uh, s- uh, board that talks about the actions that are gonna take in the school. And, uh, their story of justice, which is their disciplinary technique. And, um, right now, we are going to, the P- Partnership for Change is trying to take action to perhaps apply these to the community, um, in Burlington High School or even Winuski maybe, um, and we'll be working with justice members in the community. Uh, so, um, it was the end of the third quarter on March twenty eighth. So it was kind of a very stressful week. And, uh, every, every middle high school student should have had their report card sent home. Uh, also, a new class has started recently, driver's ed has started. It is really early in the morning, started Tuesday, which is yesterday. Um, students are enjoying their time, waking up super early and having class at six fifty in the morning.
Gonna wanna watch out.
Sounds like somebody might know about that.
Hmm.
Hmm.
I'm a little tired today.
Yeah.
You don't wanna be on alert in the driving night, so it's not so good.
It's quite sleepy for the rest of us.
Kids are motivated for driver's ed.
Uh, parent, yeah. Parent-teacher conferences are tomorrow and Friday, uh, which everyone is probably absolutely excited for. Um, school lets out early and there are two half-days on both Thursday and Friday. Um, and parents and students are able to come in from eleven to eight on Thursday and eleven to three on Friday to, um, discuss with their teachers about how the students are doing, how they're progressing over the year. Also, um, the auditions for, uh, celebrating Winuski's talent show are now over. Now the participants are practicing for their final performance. Uh, the show goes up on this Friday, the tenth, at six PM, it's six PM in the PAC over there. Um, and also, uh, the Boston trip, which, uh, a lot of students have been eagerly waiting for, is on April fourteenth, which is next Tuesday. And thirty students are going on the trip. Uh, we've raised a total of three thousand dollars for the trip through five different raffles. Uh, the trip was designed by the students of accounting class and its students helping to power the trip and keep it running. Um, we'll all leave at seven fifteen AM in the morning and we'll be having a lot of fun. Um, there are activities such as five-wits adventure, which is kind of a cool simulation where groups of people, um, are able to, like, participate in events that they would not normally do in real life, such as going on a spy mission, s- top secret espionage, and try to save the world from hacking. Or, or, there's another mission you could, uh, pick, um, you get to go on an underwater adventure and destroy a giant squid. It's pretty cool. And, uh, I'm quite excited for that too. And then we get to, um, go on the Freedom Trail and we will be able to go to Quincy Market and then, uh, TD Garden to watch the Celtics for basketball.
Wow!
Ms. Parkett coordinating that?
Yep.
You better bring your running shoes, because you do nothing but move until you come home.
Yeah.
From the time you leave.
Okay. I'll take that.
Be ready.
Uh, Rainbow has been asked to apply to, for the student representative slot on the Vermont State Board of Education.
Oh, Rainbow, that's great. You gonna do it?
So she'll be- I'm applying, so we'll see what happens.
She'll apply, she'll be applying for that, of course.
I couldn't think of a better rep.
No kidding?
Uh, so if you have any questions, ask her.
It's at four?
It's the, yeah, it's the student representative slot on the Vermont State Board of Education.
That's wonderful, there's a student rep spot and that you've been invited.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see how that works out.
Yeah, uh, students have break in two weeks, from April eighteenth to April thirty-sixth, thank God. The All-State Music Festival starts in the first week of May. It kicks off, uh, by the, uh, All-State Parade. It starts in Middlebury on May sixth. The middle high school band will be playing, uh, Marchings with Uptown Funk. So it's gonna be great.
Right.
Uh, Keen Nguyen is the choral member who auditioned in January for the All-State Band Chorus and Orchestra Concert. And he made it in.
Yes.
Yeah, so the concert will occur on May ninth and he'll be one of the bass singers, which is really cool. And, uh, the last middle high school chorus and orchestra and pops concert, which is the, uh, last concert of the year, will be on May, at least fifteenth, that's the, what's the day?
May sixteenth.
May sixteenth, sorry.
Early.
Yeah, uh, last but not least, sports, bass- May sixteenth, sorry. Yeah, uh, last but not least, sports, baseball has their first game on April thirteenth at home versus Falls Academy. Same with softball, April fourteenth.
Field right now.
Seriously. Uh, track and field has their first track meet on April fourteenth at Essex High School. And finally, we're hoping for spring, but it's snowing right now, so. Heart is a little broken. That's it.
Rainbow, just one, uh, one question, uh, on the Pittsfield report. Thank you for bringing that back. I appreciate it. I know you just barely missed our last section. You, you made a comment about they, eh, some years ago, they were bottom twenty. I think you said four years ago or something, they were bottom twenty and now they're top thirty.
Yes, they were pretty, they were.
Was the metric, did they mention what they were using as a yardstick to make that statement? Is it, it, I'm assuming it's not standardized test scores alone, it's other metrics?
Based on, um, not just test scores, but they didn't really specify, but based on many, uh, like state rankings. And school rankings. It's probably based off of, um, student satisfaction, college readiness and prep, prep. Um, and also probably the environment of the school, along with probably safety. And maybe test scores might be a part of it, but I don't think it.
Attendance, discipline, record.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good report. Any other questions or, alright? And then, let's, we'll do, I'm gonna insert the, uh, joint, uh, board retreat with Burlington. I think that would be appropriate here. And then we'll get into the policies. So if you, I think you've got some further information on, uh, dates and times?
Yes, so there was two there. So there is the Winuski School Board, Board Retri- uh, Retreat Date. That we wanted to, uh, nail down. As we, everybody gets close to their, their summer plans and all of that. So, um, Mike and I had talked and we had, uh, suggested retreat date of August fifteenth. And, uh, that is a Saturday.
I'm, I'm out.
What about the AC?
Summer fills up. Yeah, I can do the one before and after.
And that's why we, we, we just basically threw a dart at August and that's where the dart went in, so. I don't know, I'm pretty, so, eighth, twenty-second, any?
Eighth and twenty-second look good.
I was eighth, is it?
Eighth is the twenty-second, yeah.
Yeah, both dates.
So this is like you saw on the agenda, this is an eight to one, we'll get together, uh, uh, for a few hours to discuss, you know, goals and where we are. So either works, okay. Okay, so, um, without Jen, let me, let me. Put the eighth in because I think we discussed the twenty-second being too close to the start of school? Or getting real close to.
Come the next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
So let me work with Jen to see if she's available on the eighth and then we'll try to nail something down for the eighth and get it square there. Okay?
Are we meeting on the twelfth?
No, we'll use that as the meeting for that, for that time period. So it was, it was either before or after in the Louvre.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we'll do the, uh, you know, warrants if there's any of, any other general business we'll do. But most of it is focused on, where do we go from here?
Yep, yep.
So the second retreat date is, um, uh, we'd like to do, uh, another joint Burlington-Winuski Board Retreat like we did last year. And, uh, the, uh, partnership was facilitating that and, uh, the Burlington Ward. Um, was supposed to look at a date last night. The date that, uh, we were proposing was May sixteenth, which is also a Saturday. And that would be like a nine to one, uh, piece like we did last year.
Okay. Nice, it's nine to one, not eight.
Somebody's not a morning person.
I don't, Saturdays.
May sixteen, you do?
Yeah, May sixteen.
May sixteen, yeah.
Brattleboro. Did they give alternate, uh, options or just the?
Pretty, uh, pretty locked in on that date because of facility need.
Okay. I'm, I'm free.
The other option, the other option I just talked about earlier, but they would probably need to look at changing the venue was the ninth. Uh, does that work better for you, um, the ninth, May ninth?
What were they, what was the concern around the venue?
They just couldn't get the place that, that they, uh, wanted.
Yeah, May ninth and sixteen are not there.
Okay, so neither one of them works.
Okay.
I mean, yeah. Were they like renting a hotel or something?
Uh, no, they were, uh, Bishop Booth, which is up behind the high school.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's a great thing.
It's great.
No, well. Well, I mean, the only reason I ask is if, if there's space issues and we find another date where we can all go, uh, you know, Saturdays. Find time to get space at Schencklin College, I bet we can figure something out.
Oh, okay. I'll let hell know.
Yeah, right, that's after.
Graduate graduations on fifteenth and then, uh, we're good. And weekends are better.
Just a cleanup committee on the sixteenth.
Pretty much, yeah.
Alright, um, so we can bring those back and see where we go. Uh, then to, um. Policies. First one, uh, I put in here and this was based on a discussion, uh, I believe. With Nicole Mace at one point in a not-too-distant past, uh, about public comments. We don't have one. It's not required. Um, uh, so I had asked Sean if he would mind going out and checking to see if there's any kind of. Models out that would help us to, to understand. So I'd like to get input on not, do we wanna change the one that's here, but do we just in fact wanna even adopt one to, to have it? Have that discussion first and if, if we do, we can then talk about the details.
And are you referring to the public participation in board meetings or the?
Yeah, the public participation. It, it really becomes a public comment, kind of a.
This word, this is clear.
Right, and, and I guess the question is, do we wanna put, put a policy in place? And, and really the only difference between going forward without one and having one in place. I think is at the time that you have, uh, you know, thirty people show up for an issue. That may or may not be on the agenda. Or it may or may not be, um, I like the way that this one was worded, it may not be. Uh, comply with the board policy on complaints. It may not have followed the path up through the teacher, the principal, the superintendent to the board. Right, so you wanna, I don't know that you really have a way to push.
Right.
Legitimately move the discussion back to where it needs to be unless you have something in place. That was the one thing that came to my mind was the, uh, keys issue we had three, four years ago.
The keys, you said?
Yeah, we had a, we had a, just an issue that didn't, and the, the, the net of the whole thing was that the discussion really didn't belong here with us at the board level. It was forcing us to look like we were either needing to make a decision, which at that point it was not something we needed to do. But the discussion didn't belong here.
And you're saying this policy could protect you from that?
Yeah, I don't.
To add clarity, to add another layer of clarity, I think.
Right, right, I'm just trying to figure out how you would. So, so the chair shall rule out any order, present, uh, any, out of order any presentation of the board which breaches the privacy or other rights of students, parents. Or school employees.
Yeah, that's one.
Does not comply with board policy on complaints.
Yeah.
That's the one that, that gives you a little bit of.
Well, eh, eh, that one is to me, I mean, all the rest of it, eh, I like the fact that the pub- there's public comment.
Yeah.
Uh, ability for agenda items and you take the public comments before you take up the agenda item to talk through. Um, that would be, I mean, we, that's why we put the public comments at the top.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if there are a lot of eh, people coming in for a particular issue on something that's not on the agenda, we, we end up in a listening mode.
Yeah.
Uh, the speaker's list is kind of a, a, a nice idea to be able to say, okay, here's the list of speaker rather than a random.
Yeah.
Piling on and, and, uh, you know, chaotic discussion to, to formalize the. So I, you know, again, I'm, I'm open either way. I just sense that it would be nice to have this discussion. Before we end up with a room full of folks that we need to figure out how to do it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm all for it. I think it makes a lot of sense to have a policy on that, uh, for no other reason. I mean, I think we're all on board with this, but if, uh, you know, if, when we're no longer on the board, I sure would like to know as members of the public that there was. A procedure in place in case I wanted to come and talk about something. Or if I was told that it wasn't appropriate time for the topic that I was talking about, that you could point to something and say, sorry Julian, this isn't the spot. You know, go talk to someone else. I think it makes a lot of sense to adapt.
And then if you go through here, here, and here, then this is the, this is, this is a forum we'll figure out.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, with that, a- and I think, any, any changes or adjustments? Or anything that stuck out as, uh?
The only thing I would add is that down at the very bottom of page one, you know, the, uh, uh, public complaints about personnel is actually procedure now. So we just have to sharpen the language up a little bit and then, um, put that procedure in the, uh, uh, cross-reference.
Okay.
Okay, right.
That's great.
Alright, otherwise I, I didn't see any, uh, thing in here. It looked like it was in pretty good shape. Cross-references, acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we'll bring that one back with the addition there and the, obviously the Winuski and the updated piece and. Adopt next time. Great, thank you. Good discussion. Uh, the graduation requirements is back again for first reading. This one we had, uh, we had one time and Sean, you wanna just go through the adjustments?
Right, so I brought this to the attention of the board in that, um, it was inadvertently taken out of policy. When transitioning to policy governance. And, um, it is written in the, the State Board of Ed rules. And the Ed quality standards that there should be a board policy on graduation requirements. So then consulting with, um, the Agency of Education and V S B A. Uh, because of all the work that's being done on proficiencies, um, people agreed that it. Since the agency and V S B A have not been able to, uh, put a model out yet to, for us to get back into compliance. But that we don't need to make drastic changes to, um, the, the current procedure, which you wanna put into policy. So what I did with this, if you look at it, was that, uh, number one, I added language around, or the equivalent proficiencies. And then below the, the credit count there included, um, the Ed quality standards. Uh, the pers- proficiencies that are required. And that is really the only changes that I made to it. So it, it makes it broader, more flexible, you know, so that you can graduate based on credits, proficiencies. And then I would say, in the upcoming year, we would have, uh, uh, a much bigger discussion about. Changing this more substantively to meet the needs. And there's a, there's quite a few models out there, um. From the New England Secondary School Consortium and so forth that are starting to build these model policies too. And the state and V S B A is working on one as well.
Okay.
Last thing you wanna do is have a policy that slows you down from doing the things you need to do or saying it's okay, it's only a policy, we're going this way anyway. I wanna make it, this looks like it covered.
Well, that's, so that's the, the back door there, or equivalent proficiencies is like all the wiggle room that you could need. And we, and we don't have to specify what those equivalencies are?
Um, I think, well, they're listed below in general terms.
Oh, the quality students are, I see, I see, I see, I see, okay, gotcha. I gotcha, I gotcha, I gotcha. Great.
Alright, was there any, uh?
Now, are we looking at, just reading through it this time and?
Yeah, we're looking for adopting next time. If there's anything in here we wanted to adjust or. And, and it's been adjusted to account for the fact that we're moving direction from just pure seat time.
Cause I do like the introduction through the policy, the Winuski School District set high expectations. You know, that sort of lead paragraph on our old stuff. It's always kind of a nice lead in to the.
Yeah.
To the policy.
Right, this one does start in with a bat.
Yeah, just kidding.
Thumps it. So, yeah, then.
Alright, I can draft something for that.
Okay, I like that, um, the, the positive relationship between good attendance and good, good school performance. Oh, but I'm on the other one.
That's the next one, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, anything else on, uh, the first reading?
Yes.
Then, uh, attendants. We have, with the attendants, both the current policy and. The state, so two, two items here, the, the distinction between the two. And for the one that we go with, any changes to it? Thoughts up front? I had one, eh, it was, and, and I don't know why it struck me reading through it and, and it's in procedure, that's something that, that we have to deal with. But it's a kindergarten age at five on December thirty-first, you've already got the change, okay, good. And I don't, that just happened to.
I know, it's, it's nice to.
Be lodged with me when I saw.
Pop out, like, yeah, we changed.
Sorry, what did we change it to?
So that's the one that we just changed to September one. Because of, mostly because of preschool, pre-k. Early learning.
Right.
Um, I, I like the, I like the local version, I think, and then basically from Tori's comments, the. Just the wording and the lead in and it has everything else in it, so.
Alright.
So I had a few recommendations, looking at the current, uh, policy. Um, down in paragraph three, the second sentence, it says, the district encourages its administration and teachers to assist. With the implementation of individual attendance plans and so forth. And then the first paragraph, the first sentence of the second paragraph. W S D feels strongly that there's po- I would combine those two and make that kind of the policy, the beginning part. That you were just referencing the other policy, Tori. So we're saying, we feel strongly that there's a positive relationship. District encourages the administration to work on an individual basis. Then we get into, it is the policy to set high expectations. And I think we could strike the legal pu- pupil and compulsory attendance because it's, it's, um. It's referenced in, in the crop and the legal references.
Mm-hmm.
The definitions.
Uh, alright, so. So, so kindergartners are not required to attend? Or they are?
It's just the entrance age that's stated in there is now September first, not December thirty-first. That was the really only change.
Right, but so the legal pupils between six and sixteen.
Right.
Right, is not five.
Right, right.
Uh, so that's the one that you're striking, so then it would just be assumed, do we have to, you know, say that it's between five and sixteen?
No, because it would be, I mean, it's down in the Title sixteen, I think it's seventy-three.
Okay.
That's seventy-three.
I, I, I see what you're saying, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And then we also have it in the procedures.
Okay.
The age piece. And then the other, in, in the model, the one piece from the model policy would be. Oh, let's see, it's, it's about six lines down after the, the. Reference number two, students who are over, are required to attend for the full. Um, and it has updated language around there right from statute about, um, unless they're. Unable to continue excused. Um, so that I think could be included. That language could be brought over to our current policy. The rest of that below there is all procedural stuff that is actually in our existing procedures.
Right.
And so that's a, that's a superintendent thing, huh? It's not a principal decision?
Right.
Okay.
I think that's consistency across the district.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll strike the legal pupils at the top. Um, oops. Make the changes in the, in the header, bringing the one statement from the state piece up. Procedures will stay except for the. Procedures will stay except for the December thirty first back to September first.
The only other thing was it, on, on the current policy, beginning of the third paragraph, it talks about the adult diploma program. That to me was getting to another grain size that wasn't. Necessary, I guess. Unless, unless the board wanted that somewhere in the policy statement.
What does that have to do with attendance though? That's seem, you're right, that seems to be a little disjointed from the policy itself.
I think it's getting at, uh, it's getting at the idea that anybody can go back to school. At any age can attend and work towards their high school diploma. It may not look like coming to the school and, you know.
Individual attendance plans is what it says, which means, that's, that, that's sort of a regular plan maybe, is what that allows for. Well, maybe it makes sense to keep it in if that sort of protects uh, adults, students from having to conform to the traditional attendance rules.
And I think we could generalize, instead of saying adult diploma program, we could say kind of alternative pathways to graduation or something like that. Because those acronyms change over time, and it's adult basic ed, and then it's adult diploma, and then it's High School Completion Act one fifty-four, and then it's.
Gotcha.
So, that'd be smart to generalize.
Right, right, basically, right. So that, that, but the, the intent of that paragraph is to sort of write in the exception.
We're gonna take the last statement right out of it, the last sentence and move it up. Adjusted, um.
Yeah, there's uh, you know, typo, frequent or prolonged absence, I think is, supposed to be prolonged.
Now, this is a discussion on here, we don't need to, we just, we're gonna adopt on the second reading as they come through.
And the disciplinary action to which people who don't conform to this policy are subject to, is, is that a different policy or is that procedure?
That is actually um. It's procedural. It's procedural and it's listed in the handbook. And then there are um, requirements around reporting truancy. Five, five, ten, fifteen, twenty day letters and reports to the state's attorney.
And those are all in the?
It doesn't get that uh, explicit in the procedures.
Is that in the, the legal, that's in the legal piece, right, in the cross-references? That are in there, one of those titles.
I don't, I'll check on that, I don't think it gets that explicit even in the, um, in the statute or on that.
Would somebody ever be suspended for truancy type stuff?
Funny question. No, but with an older student, what happens is um, you end up going through a process where you persist and try to get the student back in. And, and create, you know, some of these alternative pathways for them to access their education. But at some point, you uh, you need to write a letter that says, we've all made all of these offerings and everything. If you don't um, notify us by such and such a day, you will be taken off the, off the books.
And can that person come back?
Yes, at any time.
Anytime they want. It's just that that releases the school the obligation to be chasing down that individual.
Yeah, we're talking about high school age students, so it makes it, in our current environment, it makes it more challenging to integrate them. And that's where they typically go to one of those alternative pathways, is trying to grab classes in April when you haven't been there all year.
Alright, any other discussion on uh, policy five ten attendance? Like those adjustments? And the last one of the policies, uh, and I apologize for having four this time, they're gonna get a little backed up on us with the. Adding the public comments and the graduation adjustment, uh, educational support systems. It's the, the next one. This one has a procedural path. That is uh, quite extensive.
I would say upfront, this, this is um, uh, something that is, requires a lot of work. At the building level right now. And it's something that we've identified, um, and have started to do some work on. But building that continuum of support services. Right now, there's a lot of support services. They're not necessarily intentional and connected. And particularly when we move from one part of the building to the other. So I, I would. And so I would definitely recommend that we, uh, we need to keep this. You know, the current lingo is uh, multi-tiered systems of support, M T S S. But it will be continued to, um, because it's described as educational support system and statute will continue to be that way. But I think it would be really helpful at a building level to have a policy like this. The procedures that you see behind there need a lot of work. Those documents are um, um, they need updating.
What, what's sort of updating?
Um, they need to become electronic, they need to be shareable, they need to be reviewed for content. And they need to be disseminated within a broader system so that all the adults and parents. Know what that system looks like and how to access it.
So given that, we can still adopt the policy itself, cause the procedures belong to you. Ultimately, if you exercise the procedures, we gotta know that if they come into question. That you've got something that you've followed. Something now that may not be right, but what we're really looking at then is the policy itself, not the procedures. As those can be changed without, without our review, so.
Why is our policy so much better than the V S B A's? It's uh, it's just so sparse, doesn't say anything.
I think in large part because it relies on all those legal references. Because the E S S is, is spelled out in those acts. And it's been updated, as you can see, it's currently one seventeen.
So are we running the risk then of uh, either being redundant or contradicting one of the laws? By being a little more explicit in the way that we are?
In the procedures?
I don't think so, because a lot of what's in the current policy is a statement about it. It's not any kind of clear directions to do anything or implementation. I think what we could do is uh, that third paragraph of policy will comply with the requirements that could be uh, stricken. Um, because it's all legal references. Yeah, and then I think eh, to be congruent with the rest of the policies, moving that second paragraph up to the top. It is the policy of W S D to provide. And then the first paragraph, um, striking that first sentence. About state and federal law, cause again, you have legal references. And then just continuing with the rest of the district has a responsibility to support. And um, I think keeping the definitions, definitions I think are helpful for, for others who might be reading the policy.
Yeah, I had a question, putting the, the requirements of the statutes in there, and we've already gotten listed below, but yeah, that's pretty much. So moving the statement up and striking. Striking that first statement. So this is, this is uh, I, I struggle to just understand the context of this. And this is uh, educational support system, help me understand just the broadest context it is.
So this is, this is everything from, um, so it's different layers. So for instance, it is the teacher who is having challenges with a particular student in the class, and where do they go for support? You know, so there's the informal pieces of they go to last year's teacher, they ask the parents. You know, but when it gets to a point where they have tried some strategies in their classroom and they need a broader team to support them. There is an E S T, an educational support team. A referral is made. The teacher comes with data from what they've done in their classroom, and then they have kind of a team of experts. Which is usually made up of, you know, a guidance counselor, a special educator, some other classroom teachers. And um, they bring whatever data they have about the student, standardized test results, other, you know, more qualifier, uh.
Qualitative?
Qualitative data. Um, and they discuss that, and then the teacher can walk out with some new strategies to try with the student. After that, it may move along the um, uh, tier of um. Getting an evaluation, a special education evaluation, and qualifying for either five or four services or um, special ed services.
This is sort of the, the early and proactive response to issues in the classroom, ranging from behavior to disability. I mean, for me, this is like one of the core policies that contributes to equity in our school or seeks to reduce the sort of achievement and opportunity gap, right? And this one's pretty central. And so when you say that the procedures need a lot of work, it's kind of alarming, given all the, all the stuff that goes on in this building, right? I mean, it sounds like we're a little bit behind on that.
Um, we're not organized in a systemic way. There's a lot of good work that happens, but it's kind of siloed and a bit disconnected right now.
So that's kind of surprising. I mean, so Robin Hood is the director of, I think it probably is relates to this in some way or another, right? Or is that, is that not right?
No, because special services. Yeah, so this is, I mean, this would be for any student, um, uh, who's experiencing any type of challenge, but you know, and that means not necessarily qualifying for special ed.
Okay, right, right, right. So including but not limited to Robin, and that's why it's hard to coordinate, cause there's a bunch of different actors.
Yep, and then, and then you wanna have all those other support services in the building available, whether it's, you know, support before school, after school, in the community. Uh, you know, and that's where you get into these tiers, the multi-tiered supports of services. You know, you s- you s- you try to meet the kid where they are, and then you try things and see how they work, and if the student responds, great, you continue there. If they're not responding, then you, you kind of go up to that next level with more intensive support, and you keep going until you find success.
So the policy itself, understood, get, get help to kids that need them, and understand the procedures, though. They, they, the procedures as they are get the job done, but they're not necessarily as tight as they could be, or should be or need to be, based on what we, what we do. And so that's something that the team is off. Working on at some point. Do you have an idea, is that a, uh, one week, one month, one year, ten year?
Somewhere between there. It's a multi-year project to get it all.
Well, so let me ask a policy governance question, and so, so I mean, this one seems just like critically important to me for the school, right, and for the success of our kids. Uh, in the school, so, you know, we, we go as far as the policy around here, right? But the policy's there, and then that's, that doesn't really tell the whole story. So at what point would we, or could we, or do we sort of request like a report back on this? Which seems really, really important in terms of school priorities. Uh, is that just beyond our purview as a board, uh, or can we ask it?
I think it's, I think it's fair to ask. I think um. The, it, it's gonna come out in some other way, right? Be it in the ends measurements or in, in the, the reporting out of the. Uh, somewhere else, cause we don't necessarily get reports on these specifically. So I don't know how, what would be the best way?
Well, I think the board could report and ask for, I mean, the language in here, the continuum of educational services, that's meeting the needs. So asking me to bring a report to the board about that, what's the continuum of services, what's available, what's the system in place? So that we could describe that to you.
And does that come in under uh, focus on learning section? Does that mean, is that?
Or it could just be a report to the board?
I mean, I'd love to get a report in six months, you know, or a year or something like that.
Yeah, I'd say next spring would be a good time. You know, it's one of the key pieces that was discussed in the elementary principal hire. It's a piece that's been worked, worked on at the, at the middle high school in the past year or so. So I, I think that we would uh, I think next spring would be a good time.
Great, great. So how do we go about that then? Do we need to put that in the?
I put it in the annual agenda. And, and that's the other pieces, I, I gotta work on that because we gotta adopt it in June. So I'll be, I've got a copy of this year's and we'll work on, on getting that. We do have to do board reports on sections three and four of the policy governance policies, so I'll bring one of those in May. To get started. We'll see. It's uh, just finding others that have done them and making sure we're on track.
I mean, so the, just the last thing on this, I mean, move on, uh, well, and I know we have to, are we adopting this or is this a read for the next time?
This is, this is the first reading and, and input on, on the policy. Piece itself, and we'll adopt.
I mean, so part of the reason I'm asking about this, cause I would love for Wunuski to be like, you know, leading the charge on what integrated, you know, K through twelve. Really great special services look like to, you know, reduce achievement gaps, and I'd love for that to reflect on metrics and all that stuff, I mean, I think. You know, we, we could really be leading the charge on this.
Yeah, I agree, for sure.
What do you guys think?
What do you do when you need help with something?
We work through it first, but like if it really doesn't work, then we do ask for help. My way of doing things.
Well, and that's the other piece, particularly for older kids, is like, how do you publicize with them, like, this is where you go? You know, I mean, most of them will say what you said, is like, oh, well, if I'm a problem math, I go to my math teacher. That's the natural. Yeah, and what other resources are there? You know, there's core support, right, after school. There's, you know, the, the tutoring through, you know, Brian said, there's different. Opportunities available.
I think it's been like publicizing all these uh, options, it's gotten a lot better. Like, I don't know if last year I'd known about the whole tutoring thing, but uh, I was hoping. Uh, she's gone a lot better with publicizing it and getting a lot of people tutors. It's become a lot easier to connect with a tutor. Really, it's just like, hey, I need help, okay, I'll help you out, and then you get a tutor, and it's really easy.
And we have a lot more students involved with the, with the um. Supplementary educational services that are available through the federal dollars, and working with Sullivan and the Stern Center after school in the summer and.
And that gets well communicated to parents too, information.
Good, uh, so let's see, that brings us then down to the superintendent monitoring report, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, the legislative update, we, uh, they, they got uh, told that they had to stay in Montpelier, so.
Oh, they did?
I think the latest was the H, what was it, seventy?
Seventy-six.
Six, uh, law got uh, voted down by three votes. Uh, this afternoon, and apparently they're gonna do more discussion on it. That is the no-strike, no-imposition, and. How to find a path forward if you run into those, so.
And I think part of the reason it was, came out so close was there was what's called the Lalande Amendment, which was gonna take. Those penalties out that were in there, and, and, and kind of say. The, uh, give room for, for the parties to figure it out without penalties.
Cause if you remember, this is the one that started with the imp- the um, binding interest arbitration. You know, no-strike, imposition, no, no-strike or imposition and a binding interest arbitration like right after. Then the next iteration was no-strike, no-imposition, uh, and then after, you know, two months to this, after three months to that. Then the next iteration was no strike, no imposition, uh, and then after, you know, two months to this, after three months that the state gets involved and at the end of a year, then I think that, that one piece had, uh, like, teachers don't get back pay. And the town gets a one percent tax adder for not getting it together and closing in a year.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, that was kind of a, uh,
Compromise.
Well, it was more of a, a penalty phase for not getting to where you need to get to in the due course of negotiation.
Right, right.
Um, I hadn't heard much about the cap in the last week, so it must be in the, in the different
It's three fifty-one, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, that was in a different discussion, so be interesting to see where that one ends up too, so.
I didn't see anything today in Vermont Digger about that one.
Yeah, yeah, you see your, your Digger comes out pretty regularly, so. That's what we've got for an update at this point and, uh, the VSB, ever, uh, Mohammed, are you getting the VSB legislative updates? Are you?
Okay, so you do get those too? You're, you get those too, right? Okay. Okay. All right, and so we'll get what we can get when we can get it, but before we meet again, I think this whole thing will be uh, closed.
Mm-hmm.
All right, on to the superintendent monitoring report, section seven. So this, uh, is the next in a series of monitoring rep- I believe this is the eighth one.
Is that correct?
I think you've now done one on each of policies in section two, so. We've got a confirmed, um, so reading down through this then, uh, financial planning and budgeting item. Section one here had, um, well, I want to talk about first the overriding statement of the policy itself and Sean, I'm not, I think in the past you've gone to the uh, further without limiting the scope of the foregoing enumeration and then had an interpretation on each of the line items down below. This one has more than the others brought, at least to my attention, the, the question of do we need an interpretation on that front piece? And more specifically, uh, this one says, "The superintendent shall not cause or allow financial planning, budgeting for any fiscal year, the remaining part of any fiscal year to deviate materially from the board's ends priorities, risk financial jeopardy, or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan." So my question here, right at the outset, is not necessarily with the interpretation that we just got, but the policy itself in that do we have a multi-year plan?
Right, can we have a multi-year?
I, can we have a multi-year plan? Um, and, and I'm gonna limit that discussion to just a couple of minutes and then get into the interpretation. Um, but we haven't had an interpretation of the, of the header piece, just the interpretation of the, of the base. So that then becomes, I think, a discussion for the board if we want to have that discussion of, does this policy do what we needed? Are, are we, um, by not having a multi-year plan?
Right.
We may have a multi-year, uh, facilities plan.
Yep.
We know what's going on there.
We got a multi-year contract.
We tend to get multi-year contract, we've driven to try to get multi-year contracts, may not necessarily.
Yeah.
We never know what that's gonna turn out year to year.
Interesting.
Or cycle to cycle.
Yeah.
Um, but do we want to bring that piece back in for a discussion on policy itself to say, did we say what we mean?
Yeah.
Or can we mean what we say?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I don't, I'm not convinced on that one and I can seek, um, guidance from Val before we have that discussion.
I mean, it makes sense on the face of it, right? Like you would, you would hope that, uh, I mean, there's probably multi-year plans for a lot of things, right? You've got a multi-year plan for changing the special services, uh, thing. It's probably a multi-year plan for, uh, you know, Robin's probably got a multi-year plan for how she's gonna shift things around in special ed. There's probably a multi-year plan for, uh, implementing social thinking across the elementary school and then it's, what's it called in that middle and high that you guys do?
Success Council.
The success counseling, I mean, all that is probably born from a multi-year plan. I don't know that there's a multi-year master plan, right?
Right.
I mean, there's not probably one, what is, what do, what do we mean? A multi-year plan?
Well, I think what you're referencing also, we're waiting, this, the state has, uh, the agency of education has promised that they will be providing a template for one plan. So that we can bring all, you know, it's been a long time since schools in Vermont have been able to have one plan. Cause there's been just the strategic plan, the Green Mountain Star Plan, the, um, you know, No Child Left Behind and everything else that was required. So that's what we've been kind of waiting for is like, give us the template, then we can take what you're talking about, all those other things and bring them into a single plan.
Ooh, that's a major piece of work. And that would, that, was that?
It's a big template.
A big template, it would, that would definitely be a multi-year thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's
But on this one, are we talking a multi-year financial plan?
Well, right, right.
Right, that seems to be what it's, especially under the header of the financial planning and budget.
Right, different from curriculum, but.
But saying that we have these multi-year plans for other things, and isn't it the legislative gymnastics that prevents that sort of multi-year planning, because you don't even know
That too.
all the variables? But like you said, we do have a plant, you know, a grounds for multi-year, you know, facilities.
But, but even curricular stuff has budgetary implications.
Oh, sure.
Right, you're gonna get this amount of training over this amount of years and whatever the thing is that you're trying to do, I mean, all that stuff.
So is it that it's, that there are plans in place, but is it that the actual budget that we work on is a year-to-year process, but long range there's goals and priorities being set. It just, it's not what we see when we're doing
Achieving the ends of a multi-year plan.
Yes.
Just achieving the ends itself as a multi-year.
Yeah.
Aren't you Mr. Teaching Planning Expert guy?
Mine ends up in the tactical range most of the time.
Oh, okay.
Very much tactical most of the time. Um, so let me, let me take this then, rather than to belabor the discussion here and not have that particular piece of it as an agenda item, let me go to Val. Get a brief description, define the discussion, see if she's got some guidance and if I feel we have to bring it back, we'll bring it back for a discussion of policy and if we don't, I'll get an explanation of how it is good where it is.
Yeah.
So now to the discussion of the interpretation that we're here to.
Well, let me just say that I, I like the intent of it. I think if we could look at a multi-year plan, that would be great. Uh, and I, I, I share your question about is it, is it feasible? Given your budget cycles and stuff. So yeah, I'd love to hear what Val has to say.
Okay. Otherwise, on the policy interpretation itself.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Comments, thoughts?
Clear, thorough?
I always have a few things I catch after I send it to you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um.
I had one that I'd like to start with, because I don't know if I'm
Yeah, go ahead.
just not reading it right or if I'm taking it out of context. I'm really struggling. And it's the interpretation on the first one. And the first one really just, uh, goes back to two point, I forget, three, and the financial conditions and activities that we've already done. So that list down below is those items in financial conditions and activities, so I understand where that came from. But when I read through it, uh, interpreted to mean that the adopted budget shall not cause or allow development of uh, financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from the board priorities established in ends policy. Clear enough. The next statement though, um, it says, "Moreover, the adopted budget will provide for the following conditions," and then they got the list. So if, there's either a not in there or
Yeah.
it, it
I struggled with how to word that and, um, so that was one that I had too, so after reading it, uh, five more times. Um, so one of the things I was, a fix would be at the end of before moreover is just saying by ellipsis, so priorities established in end policy by, so you, you're still saying shall not cause or allow by doing those things, expending more funds, spending surplus revenues.
Okay.
Otherwise, you can, I mean, the other way, I guess, is moreover, the adopted budget will not provide for the following conditions.
Will not allow
Will not allow.
the following conditions to exist. It, it seemed like there was a not required in there.
It shall not, yeah.
Alright, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 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 I know, it's just getting, just coming.
I tripped on it Saturday morning, went through the end of the pot of coffee and it just didn't come. I appreciate, I appreciate I'm not the only one.
You're thinking, what's he trying to do? He wants to spend as much
You're right, he will provide the ability to spend more funds.
Use all those reserves up and
Right.
We're not keeping our eyes.
I can clean that one up.
Okay. Um, otherwise, I, I didn't really have anything in there. I mean, we're, we're looking at the, uh, annual reports and, uh, other.
I have professional development twice in number three, down in the bullets.
Okay.
It's important.
It is.
Yeah.
I could just put it in bold.
Okay. But otherwise, that, that's pretty much the one that, uh, the one that I had. Otherwise, it seems like we've got that in place. All right, any other, uh, comments? If we clean that one up, are we willing to accept that interpretation when it comes back? Any reason we wouldn't? That's good. Okay, so we'll do a discussion, that one will be accepted as we get it in, cleaned up and in the next report. Thank you again. Um, line item eight here, the unity of control again, um, and I'll segue, what's that?
Do we have the
No, no, there's nothing, there's nothing for this one in here. Um, I'll bring it back. I wanted to have, uh, just a discussion. I couldn't get the review done in time to get it posted and I apologize for that. Uh, but I'll bring it back in May. The, the net of this one here and the reason that I wanted to at least put it in is that in sections three and four, uh, those are essentially our, uh, issues, uh, our policies, board policies. So we've got to do the same interpretation that Sean's doing for the section two, for sections three and four. Now, there's standards, there's others that have gone before us and paved a path, so they're not necessarily getting it from top down. But it forces us to put down on paper, do we believe we're actually doing these things?
Right.
And what is the evidence that I see as saying that we actually do that?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I think it's a good exercise and again, uh, there are templates or there are others that have paved the path before us. My thought would be that in the agenda for next year, we'll put in five or six of them, at least one each. So we can each take a stab at doing an interpretation.
And writing interpretation.
And writing one up. It'll be opposite, hopefully, the schedule of the newsletter, so you don't have
I hope so.
Both at the same time. Um, so, we'll try to get that schedule lined up to do it that way.
Yeah.
But again, I don't, I didn't, I didn't have to spend a significant amount of time writing it, but thinking about what it is that needed to go in here from the base. So, uh, I'll bring that sample in and we'll do three point one, uh, we'll, we'll bring it back in for May and I'll get it in on time, because I got it just about done here.
Okay.
Wow.
But I wanted to bring, that was one of the things that Mohammed and I learned. I learned more in policy governance one oh one this third time that I took it than I did in either of the first two by a long shot.
Yeah.
Just to sit back, step back and listen with a different set of I wanna say, listen with a different set of eyes.
Yeah.
Listen with a different set, a different focus, a different, a different perspective. It was, it was interesting.
Yeah.
So, that worked out well. All right, and, uh, then last item here, other than, uh, executive session is, uh, recent community activities by board members. Do you wanna go briefly with our meetings with Jess and?
Yeah, yeah, we had, so we met with Jeff Bridge, real estate, uh, agent and very active member of the Winuski community. She's also part of the Winuski partnership, is that what it's called? The, the folks who are doing the downtown association.
Yeah, she's part of the downtown group.
And who are you talking about, Jessica?
Jeff Bridge, her name is, yeah. Uh, and, and, and Mike and I met with her, trying, this is a follow-up on that conversation we had about how can we communicate to parents that this is a great school system and that, uh, you know, it's a great school system, you know, from beginning to end. You, you, you don't have to, you don't have to leave to get a great education. You can stay right here in Winuski, uh, and do, you know, have, have, have a wonderful opportunity to, to learn. And she gave us some good ideas, uh, on how to proceed with that. We were trying to sort of develop a, a, get some advice from her on how to communicate that message to real estate folks who, uh, might be shopping around with parents thinking, oh, Winuski, yeah, okay, it's a little more affordable, but what about the schools? Um, and, you know, trying to tackle that conversation.
Because the, 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 one of the statements she made is the real estate folks can't give or, or not supposed to give to their clients, uh, speculation, uh, gut feel. It's supposed to be strictly to facts and things that they've been given.
Cause I was wondering, my, my question was, what's the sense of what they're saying about our community?
Yeah.
I think it's very, I think it's very widespread and, and old.
Very, very old, kind of like the grade schools partnership.
It's not current.
Right. Right, right, and so she said, you know, I, I, I would want she'd come up with some basic facts that we can share. Uh, how about a luncheon where you could bring real estate agents in and tell them what's going on and give them the basic facts.
Give them chores.
And, and maybe tours, sure. Uh, we hadn't actually thought of that, this is a great idea.
Yeah, get them in here so they can see it.
Yeah. So, uh, so, so we committed to coming up with some stuff. We started a couple drafts, we're sort of in the middle of that.
Yeah, thank you, by the way, for, the hardest part is getting the pencil on the paper. Once you do that, you can start flowing, so I appreciate the
Yeah.
the help getting that started.
Yeah.
So we'll get something polished up and bring it back to the, to the board and let you guys review where we are and
Yeah.
that'll be either May or June, I hope, for at least a good first draft and meet with, uh, the real estate board in the local area.
Right.
Uh, at some point, just to bring something to them in a face-to-face communication.
That's wonderful.
This is what you heard, this is what we got.
Yeah. So there's this thing called gradeschools.org that makes me nuts, um.
What is it?
It is a website that rates schools nationwide. And
Based on some factors.
Right, um, system on the air, I won't say my other name, but it's but I, you know, it, it's that sort of thing that is old information and what, in terms of communication, because it is online when you go to look up a school. A lot of parents do it. There's also ability for people to make comments about the school.
Oh, look at that.
But it's another thing that some parents do reference.
Yeah.
And, um, it's not nice. Um, it's also not accurate.
Yeah.
Right.
Kneecap scores are a part of it. So I don't know if that could be a part of, how do we look at all different, um, media outlets that are
Yeah, ultimately.
communicating a story about our schools that may not be the most accurate, but it has access.
In, in lieu of putting something together that actually shows what it is you are,
Yeah.
people are gonna believe what it is they've always heard.
Yep.
So it's incumbent upon us to make it known what it is we're doing and I think we're starting. I think it's probably gone farther than we think it has at this point, but we need to make sure we keep it moving.
Right.
So. All right. Uh,
Interesting.
And then Julian opiates, I, I don't mean to push you on tonight, but
No, I'm into it, man.
The opiate piece to me is a real, uh, a real key piece of the community.
Uh, opiates next week, Wednesday, the fifteenth, uh, six o'clock at the O'Brien Community Center, the next installment of a conversation about preventing opiate abuse in our community, which is, as you might expect, blossoming into a conversation about how to improve our community. Uh, just generally, uh, and sort of a community development discussion and it's getting pretty interesting. We've learned a lot about what's going on in Rutland. They have some really interesting initiatives as far as policing goes, as far as, um, code and property and rentals and engagement with landlord goes and as far as health, uh, and wellness goes. And, uh, you know, we're doing a lot of really interesting things here in town and there's some things I think we can learn from the Rutland experience. So, uh, I'm excited to have the police engaged in that, the city and the school. And, um, you know, with the Coalition for Safe and Peaceful Communities, who is the convener of this conversation, I think we're, uh, we're, we're, we're starting. We, we've been doing a lot of studying over the past, whatever, six or eight months have we been doing this? I don't know how long we've been doing this. Uh, and I think we're starting to get to the point where we know some stuff and we can start thinking about putting together some action projects. I'm hoping that our own peace jam group, uh, will be a big part of making that happen. I'm hoping that our own peace jam group uh will be a big part of making that happen here at the school, and uh I think, I think it's gonna be exciting, so there's gonna be. This time, there's gonna be some real estate folks there, there's gonna be some uh uh greater police presence both locally and from the state, uh and. It's really, really interesting, I think it's, I think we're starting to get to a really interesting place in that conversation.
Oh, fun.
I'm excited.
Yep, has been a good discussion, for sure.
Six o'clock on the fifteenth?
Six o'clock on the fifteenth, yep, all are welcome. Yep, O'Brien Center, should be a good one.
Anything else?
I have another item, actually.
You do?
Yesterday, uh at Champlain College, we had a very interesting discussion. Uh convened by our Office of Diversity and Inclusion uh in partnership with a whole lot of people about um. Discipline and its impact on equity on uh kids across the state, right, so uh Winuski uh school district was represented by. Uh uh the very excellent Kate Groden, Assistant Principal in the Middle High School, lots of Burlington system folks were there. Uh both from the uh the Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Group, but also Assistant Principals, Special Services, uh Special Ed. Uh tons of people from U V M and Champlain and uh and you know, teachers, just a really excellent group, really diverse mix of folks. Who were concerned with the trends uh that Vermont turns out to match up with the rest of the country, we you know, we have this sort of sense of exceptionalism in a lot of ways, where we're different than everybody else, and and that's true often. But as it turns out, um uh uh kids who are uh either involved in special education in some manner. Uh kids from disadvantaged backgrounds or kids of color are twice as likely to be as suspended here in Vermont than uh other kids. And we're no different than the rest of the national trend, so yesterday, and that means that we impact different populations in a way that's that's not really equitable. Uh and which is why I happen to be interested in that policy that we talked about tonight. But we had a a good uh four-hour discussion about, you know, what would it look like in Vermont if we changed stuff, what we would need to do, what's the vision for. Uh how things could be different with regards to discipline, uh as 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 is often the case, Winuski is right on top of that, and I would say out ahead of the curve. Uh in terms of discipline and attitudes toward discipline, um you know, there was talk of having sort of discipline incidents be opportunities for learning and leveraging inclusion into the school. Rather than opportunities for separation and exclusion of the students that were involved in tough moments, right, and having uh training for teachers to. Uh learn how to manage tough situations and so forth, so it's the beginning of a of a of a another process and another series of discussions that I hope. Will uh will be convened by the Dean of Education at Champlain College, I'm hoping, uh and we'll take it from there, but uh I was there. You know, Winuski was very well represented, was definitely a loud and very uh progressive and useful voice in the mix.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's good one.
Awesome.
It's important.
I think so, yeah.
Huge.
Yep. Good, anything else? Alright, uh.
I should mention, Hal Colston was there from the partnership.
Excellent.
Always excellent in his contributions as well.
Yeah. Good. Alright, anything else, anything on the next agenda anybody would like to see, have, other than the annual?
What are we doing, the local and global engagement?
Uh I have a list of folks to get a hold of, we had it either in May or June.
Okay.
Forget. And I think we talked about the local piece. Specifically, I'm not sure if you can really.
Fly infection with local.
I'm just not sure you can necessarily divorce too, but. Did we decide on?
Hmm, it's not updated in here, but it may be in our.
Notes from agenda planning. Okay, cause I thought we had talked about moving it to May or or even June, we've got the uh. Roberts rules, we don't wanna overlap the local and the Roberts rules, cause we'll be here until eleven.
Yep.
Um so we have to merge that in, I at this point, we'll have to figure out which ones we've got ready.
Appreciate that.
Anything else? Alright, so upcoming events, parent-teacher conferences, you know what, I really miss those, I might just come up and walk the halls. You know, I'll do it for twenty-five years and not miss it.
There you go.
Spring recess, April twentieth to the twenty-fourth, V S B workshop at Winuski, April twenty-fifth.
That's the negotiation?
That is the negotiation.
Full house, huh?
Uh yeah, yeah, and they loaded it up, so that's good, and then our next regular board meeting on May thirteenth.
Great. And the uh Winuski talent show on Friday.
Winuski talent show this Friday, that's right.
Come on, you guys gonna be there?
No. Not in there. I'm busy, I can't.
You'll be in the audience with Danny, you get a, you get a couple surprises, I guarantee you, if you get.
Are you gonna be on stage?
I might be on stage with some other board members.
There's a rumor, there's a rumor.
Uh, it's a rumor, interesting.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a meeting, is it?
Well, that's the question.
That's no improv, that's improv.
Should invite Stitzel to make sure that uh we're good to go.
Okay, moving, moving right along. Um so I would at this point accept a motion to move into executive session.
Ah, so moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I will grant a four-minute.
You are so.
Reprieves.
So gracious.
Meet in executive session, Sean, if you wouldn't mind opening the back door, yep, we can.
It's open.
Oh, it is.
Nine thirty-two.
Out of power surge.
Oh, really? Oh, jeez.
Nine thirty-two. You're welcome.
Alright, very good, we are in executive session, we're tuning it up in just a moment.